All right, here we go. Good afternoon, we're calling the May fourteenth Board Work Session on order at three o'clock. We're going to give a roll call standing now here with Director.
Hey, Martin, Director five, is your five?
Dr. Constance Victor as a state superintendent.
Charlie Simpson, Director three. Okay, Carter, I'm saying we might be sworn in.
That's right.
For her.
Assistant.
Director for this one. Thank you very much. Okay, welcome to our guests who are joining us. We have Sarah Ann online. I need a motion for approval of the May fourteenth Board Work Session agenda. And the second? I guess it's gonna be us two. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Ah, there we go. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to our public comment section. If you're attending a person who would like to make a public content comments, you can sign up on the public comments sign in sheet. For those who are heading online, you can raise your hand with your name and chat. I do have several comments that I need to read. And I'm going to first start with, we have some that signed in. And they, uh, what they wanted to talk about within fill the sheet out. So I wanna see if they are here. Do we have any online? By units?
Well, no.
Director, by the way, Director, if you can, if I'm reading.
Coach. Director Hoover, are you with us? Maybe?
Maybe, so, yeah, yeah.
So I wanted to make sure that, um, Madison Martin had left a follow up comment, wanted to talk about the loss of the College and Career Center. So if Madison, Martin, if you wanted to be sure. And then we also have a, looks like a Peyton, I'm gonna do my best with his last name, Cooper. Peyton Cooper wanted a comment about what's happening in the district currently and how the staff cuts affect the students.
That's it.
And then we also had, oh, I'm gonna start by the last name again, Jennifer Pachamba. Jennifer wanted to talk about regarding the district budget cuts and the excellent students. So those who were three that had sent in but wanted to talk about it, hopefully they'll show virtually until that moment. However, I will read the public comments, the ones that filled out the form. One, two, and three to read now. Great. So the first name is Ms. Courtney Martinez, uh, public comment. Good afternoon, school board. And I apologize, I don't have my glasses, so I'm gonna do my best. I am writing today in response to the recent staff and position cuts. My children have been in typical of school districts since kindergarten. Now both will be at foster next year for their senior and freshman years. When they are in kindergarten, college and career seem far away. Then when my oldest was in sixth grade, we were connected with Ms. Pachamba and began learning about the career paths available to my child and all T S U program. And if I'm saying the name wrong, anyone can correct me. This Ms. Pachamba was the gear up college and career specialist, and while her title may have been weren't spent over the years, she helped to guide students down paths towards a future. Futures that did not just include college colleges, but trains too. She has been the stead contact for all my college and career questions that I have had for both of my children. And we have been slowly and way too quickly getting closer to the launch into adulthood. Hearing this, critical position has been cut is gut wrenching, especially as my child and many people's children are entering their senior years and preparing for the stress along with it. The stress of navigating FASPA, which has changed and become less difficult, but become more difficult. The stress of how to pay for college expresses of if college is even the right fit for them, the stress of being an adult and what that entails. Ms. Pachamba has helped to guide not only my child, but hundreds of children through these issues. She has built the trust and respect from our greater school community. She has demonstrated time and time again that she is here for all our children and their success. She inspired my daughter to attend Running Start, and as a result, she will be graduating Foster High School. Not, not only her diploma, but also her associates' transfer degree. This is because of Ms. Pachamba and her position. It was because of her dedication to our students and her unwavering support of for their success. I understand that we are in a financial crisis. I understand hard cuts need to be made, but I'm left wondering, what is the purpose of Foster High School if it isn't to launch these scholars into career paths, inspire them? Without this position, who will take on the important job? The counselors? They are already stretched way too thin. I can guarantee that the same level of commitment and dedication of students post-secondary plans will not be successful. Foster High School will become a printing press for homeless that are placed on dressers or shelving or beds without a second thought, as students try to blindly navigate the already tumultuous journey into adulthood. Please choose to invest in our students' future. Please save the college and career readiness position. Please save Ms. Pachamba. Thank you, Martinez. Our next one is from Arista Alejandra. It says, "Greet school boards and director. I want you to reconsider your decision to make, did your decision terminate Ms. Pachamba? In my role as a student, she has the biggest advocate for students' futures and should be your first choice for her role. Since the sixth grade, she has been my main source of support. She helped me access college options that no one at Foster High School was unable to provide. My counselor has too many students to work with, to be very encouraging and intentionally helpful. So Ms. Pachamba has always helped to push me to explore my talents in science. She is the only one who has assisted me in connecting with the main college and who has given me positive feedback about my subject matter knowledge and comprehension. She has assisted many learners in locating top colleges where they can receive grants and scholarships. She has assisted me by researching universities with a reputation for accepting forensic science majors. She was a huge asset when it came to researching colleges, and she also encouraged me to speak or to seek universities abroad. In cutting her position, you are depriving kids of the assistance they require while completing the FASPA or applying for scholarships. If you don't decide to change your mind, you are removing the one resource hundreds of students may rely on of assistance. While we students are preparing for college, she provides us with the motivation and knowledge to lessen our struggles. She is responsible for getting students tens of thousands, if not millions of dollars in scholarships and grants. Having her position shows future Foster High School students that this district does not care about their future. They don't care about setting them up for success in career paths are you that are unique to them and their interests. Please reconsider renewing Ms. Pachamba to her college and career readiness. Please help support current and future foster students in their pursuits of planning their futures by maintaining the one person who has a knowledge and trusting relationships with students and families in our schools. Thank you for your time and consideration. Arista Alejandra, class of twenty twenty-five. Finally, we have Miranda Garcia. Her comment is, "Ms. Pachamba has positively impacted me in a way that has made me good out of my comfort zone, which is very rare for a quiet person like me. She has seen me grow since middle and has supported me since the very beginning. Up until the pandemic, Ms. Pachamba still made sure that I was given the middle school experience despite being online and offering virtual appointments to talk about anything that I had on my plate. Entering Foster as a freshman, I was utterly clueless and extremely shy. However, when I came to visit the College and Career Center to see Ms. Pachamba, she automatically created a pathway for me as well as classes to consider for my specific career that I was thinking of pursuing. That very same year, I was enrolled in Apple, where Ms. Pachamba made sure that all the resources and information I needed was provided for me. One day in particular was when she encouraged me to join all the academic opportunities she organized for students, especially the college visits that occurred every month. Because of these events, it has allowed me to get out of my comfort zone and begin networking with college officials and start looking for what I want to do in the future. Another event was she organized a field trip to the N A C A C College Fair. That was a key moment for my education. This moment helped me to realize all the possibility schools that I'm able to attend and the experience that can help me grow as a person. My plan throughout high school was to only attend four-year universities within the state of Washington. But attending the N A C A C College Fair expanded my horizons and diverse programs that haven't crossed my mind. Not only did the College Fair give me school choices, but it also alternated my career path and set and see free grants for the specific career pathway. For every trip, internships and programs, Ms. Pachamba was always there to speak for every student and to make sure what I needed was there, including mind-matter programs that has supported me in every way possible for both academically and personally. As a first-generation student, this program has supported my goals in pursuing higher education and handle obstacles that prevent me from accomplishing my goal. I wouldn't have considered participating in mind-matter if it wasn't for Ms. Pachamba, who knew that I needed to assist me in my academic goals. All the given opportunities that she has provided for me share one thing, which is to support me in my academic goals. Ms. Pachamba has helped me tremendously, especially coming from an immigrant family that has sacrificed everything in love with her homeland to give me a better education. As a result of everything, she has given me, she has not only helped me, but also my family who needed it most. As a Running Start student in my junior year, Ms. Pachamba has given me more support than ever. She has given me space to complete assignments and projects. She has given me letters of recommendation for programs and internships. She has offered me scholarships to reward me money so that I'm able to pay for my college tuition. Everything that Ms. Pachamba has done for me, she has done out of the goodness of her heart and has extreme care for me. With Ms. Pachamba working as a college and career specialist, she is helping me achieve my academic goals, especially as an uprise senior. However, by cutting off the college and career, you are taking away resources for students and future seniors that need the most support, including the students who come from first-generation families that don't have guided mentors to show you them better educational opportunities for their child. I hope by listening to this, it makes you acknowledge what you are taking away from students and upcoming seniors. Hello?
We have one more.
One more to read or one online? One more email. I apologize. Yes, thank you. All right, this one is from Gavin Steinmez. Uh, because of the debt school district is in, teachers, uh, are not being renewed, we as students are asking you to reconsider your decision on renewing Anthony Pascal's contract. We have made a petition for him to keep his job, and if our demands aren't addressed before day fifteen, we will protest. Oh, that's it? Okay, and as an email, public comment. Okay, that would be the final one, I believe. And it's, did any of the three that asked, are they online by chance? Let's give this a moment to see if anybody else is going to join us virtually and would like to make a comment. Yeah, nobody else has?
Yep.
Move on. I think we can move forward from the public comment portion. We can move on to the discipline plan?
Yeah. Scott McOfficer. Um, yes, I'll be going through, uh, information as requested, so following up on the recent presentation on our disciplinary student discipline information.
Doc, can you be this about fifteen?
Oh, yes.
Since we have more people here.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to our school administrators who are here also to be part of the panel and ready to respond to questions should the board have.
Director Christopher Scholz, Michael Corle, Principal at Florida.
Good afternoon, Latanya Parker.
And I'm good mom, Assistant Principal of Foster High School.
Yes, welcome, I'm the Assistant Principal from Foster High School.
Thank you. Okay, so first, that looks actually is using the racial equity toolkit to analyze and address the data we have. So again, just for visual remainder, our key questions on our equity toolkit, they're there here. Who are the underrepresented groups, impacts, unintended impacts, um, how we involve stakeholders, naming the barriers to more equity, and what would we do about the barriers? So these slides will, uh, address those questions. So first, our underrepresented groups, this is, um, referring to the board presentation by Executive Director Jeff Baker. I still have the last, um, presentation at the board meeting. Our two groups where we see significant overrepresentation of exclusionary discipline are our students who identify as Black, African-American, and multiracial students. And then with suspensions or expulsions. Um, and potential impacts of these, these, uh, consequences. Uh, students that is in school, you know, you can't learn if you're not in school, so there's a key, um, issue. Students not able to develop a sense of belonging, um, there's an issue that could be a loss of trust from families and students. And this, um, takes away a little bit of their, um, pursuing their hopes and dreams for the future in missing school. Our existing disparities through the racial equity lens, the two that were, um, most called out and mentioned, this is just some data to go with that. Um, students who identify as Black African-American make up twenty-two percent of our district-wide home student population, but they receive thirty nine percent of all suspensions and expulsions. And there are other disparities with the multiracial students. They make up only six percent of our student count, but we see fourteen percent of all exclusionary discipline. Now, the other one I want to report on also because it's a focus, um, for all of us, our Hispanic Latino group. Uh, actually, the data, the most used data shows they make up thirty-seven percent of student body, but we see only thirty, thirty-four percent. So it's, the margin of error is roughly four percent.
So I've been curious about, um, the multiracial and this is obviously people self-identifying, that's what group they're in. Do, when they, when they do multiracial, do you, uh, list which make which multiracial? So I'm wondering if there's an overlap between, you know, if most of the multiracial maybe one of the multiracists that you report is black.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I mean, we began to try to look into that before now, and it's just a fairly complex , um, topic because there's many combinations you might see as far as, um, your racial intersectionality. So, um, that is something we'd be able to put together for future, but we don't have that specifically right now.
Cause I'm wondering just if, if the multiracial is kind of part of, you know, the black voter representation.
Yes, and, and this way our principal being, we talked about how we're seeing some cases when Skyward and Swiss talk to each other, sometimes uncertain why students might be, um, identify, self-identify as one of this being one system, it imports as a different one. So it is right at the moment, we don't know whether it is, but we obviously it's an issue that's high in parts, we just look into it, it doesn't fix that.
Well, to say we are looking at, I mean, that's one of the things we've been addressing. Uh, so we have to fix some of the technical fixes.
Yes.
Before we can dig deeper, but yes, um, I was sitting with one of our elementary principals and we're not just wanting to looking on the multiracial, but also programmatic um, as well. So that's the question from the board that we have to get at, so just thinking about the words. And we talked about this, I felt, I talked about this with Director Hoover, I talked about this with you, and friends, folks. Um, we talked about two or more identifiers. I guess landing with the board, what is it that you'd like to see? Is it race? Is it program? Is it a mix of both? We can't do all of it, but we can focus on two of the succinct areas that we want to focus on. So that'd be great to hear from the board. When we pull out, um, intersectional data, right, programmatic or student identifiers, uh, hearing from the board as and ask uh, what you'd like to see reported on, um, so that we can, uh, continue that in the future.
I think, I mean, for me, the answer to that is, it depends on, we're looking for disproportionate, wherever they may exist. So, you know, across race, gender, program.
Yeah.
And across all those, any place where, you know, the other thing, the other question you might add on this is, if we look at, um, the C D of how many of these, I mean, we're talking about, uh, discipline, we're talking about referrals, offenses, suspension, we're kind of three different aspects of that. How many of them are coming out of, um, incidents uh, with substitutes, for example? Uh, I know, having experienced in this district, uh, question for a lot of years, you know, there's a lot of our staff um, knows students. You know, because a lot of these, these incidents are related to the broad category of disrespectful, you know, whatever, which is a broad, you know, category, um, subject to a lot of interpretation. And, you know, so our register staff full-time staff knows students better. And so, you know, I'm just really curious, because we know we have a very fine rate of substitutes in this district in comparison to other districts. So how much of this issue is related to that problem? That's kind of the question. I don't know the answer to that, sure, but just having observed over the years, what happens in classrooms when subs come in, you know, the dynamic obviously changes. And sometimes not for the best.
Some of it, we can teach and such, we can relate to that. Uh, our principals, do you have a chance of seeing anything, um, any patterns related to substitutes in student discipline on those days?
Um, I'll respond. Yes, we actually have one out of the total number of discipline, uh, referrals that we've received, new one related, um, to a substitute being in the building.
Okay. So that's true, that's almost nonexistent, I mean, really low, okay?
And I have zero, uh, suspicions, uh, based.
How about, how about referrals, going back all the way to the beginning?
I would probably say one or two.
Okay, so not many.
I would say we have more at the middle school that are referral. I don't know that we have any, um, incidents that resulted in an exclusionary discipline with the subs, but we definitely had uh, referrals or needs for the student support team to respond to those classroom to support the guest teacher because, uh, kids aren't always needed expectation with the guest teacher.
So it's different if I build, if I look. Okay, that is, cause I mean, I mean, I can think of different approaches to, um, if some of it's coming from subs, then you could think, I mean, you talked about, you know, uh, long years, uh, maybe that's a whole different area, but it, okay.
And some of that really instructed to the M G S S and positive behavior systems in the school, so that'd be a very logical tie in that.
Yeah, if now's okay, time to jump in. Uh, there's just a few things I was thinking about. Um, one is, um, I, I agree with Director Larson around, I think the intersectionalities that we're looking at are gonna depend based on the data that we're looking at. I think one of the things that comes up so much for me is, um, you know, I really wanna make sure that we're just looking at data with curiosity, right? And so I think there's a lot of ways in which I would even be okay with, here are the questions that we asked ourselves when reviewing this data, right, to really get a sense of how are we looking at all of the different potential intersectionalities that may exist, right? Um, cause the reason why we look at intersectionalities is because as we know, like I think I mentioned at one of our previous board meetings, the definition of intersectionality is again, thinking about, um, the various, um, identities that a person holds and where those, uh, those identities intersect with each, intersect with each other, um, in relation to where they hold power and privilege or are might marginalized. And so, um, uh, uh, you know, that might change again, depending on the data set that we're looking at. So an example of that, even looking at that kind of the last um, data set here around the, our Hispanic students, so being thirty-seven percent of our student body, but receive thirty-four percent of student suspensions. Um, uh, just using that raw number, um, I'm still curious. I've still got a lot of questions even within that number. For instance, how many of those, uh, thirty-four percent, um, uh, are also M L L students? Um, and then how many M L L students make up our entire student population, right? So are, is there an intersect, is there a larger representation of M L L students um, that identify as Hispanic versus non-M L L students, right? So I, I'm more interested, I think, in what are the questions that you as a data team, as a teaching and learning team are asking about the data? And less so in getting those, all of those numbers back, right? Cause I understand you're not, otherwise you'd be giving us these really long reports all of the time with an endless amount of data. Um, but I, again, I think for me, it's how are you all getting curious? What questions are you asking? And then where is it leading you, right? Those questions, those curiosities about those intersectionalities? And then what is the outcome at the other end, um, of those questions, those curiosities in the discussion?
Can I just share, just wanna add one thing. Um, this morning, um, this, the leaders, we had a training this morning, and they have an equity leads training with their equity leads. Last time, that really was with the principals. And the principal sat and looked at their data again to sort of think about revisioning, so adding a school improvement goal around this, right? Because it's also new ones for school, right? Cause that's what we learned is we have our district-wide data, but it's actually at the school level. Right? So that when they start looking at their data, thinking about those intersectionality components, intersectionality components. So they have been dissecting, and that's where they're gonna be drafting, uh, a goal around this for their, when they're revamping their school improvement plan for next year that's specific to their data in their school, related to what they're finding as, I mean, as, uh, as, uh, a, a problem of practice for them to work on as a school team. So, um, that's how it all trickles, right? We can look at it from the district level, but then at the school level, cause that direction of work has to happen. So I don't know if any of the school leaders are like, have anything to them.
That's a Parker, don't put you on the spot. This is one I know you had mentioned, really, I think innovative way of looking at your discipline-related goal, if it's a positive approach and also an anti-racist approach, but also get at, um, measuring and as appropriate to modifying our approaches. Would you be willing to share with that? Your thinking on your, your goal or like to restore the practices?
Oh, sure. Um, so one of the things, uh, that our team, uh, is looking at, you know, related specifically to the discipline at our school is um, focusing on the restorative practice at first. Um, and this is something that's been ongoing, of course, is the punitive approach, approach. Um, so centering it around, um, common language, uh, common definitions of like what does restorative practices look like? Uh, and then potentially having, um, staff and scholars, um, come up with agreements to what that would look like in, in action.
Thank you. It's great, we're getting to treat that of the real-life experiences.
The other thing that it's more correlation, the, the relationship between chronic absence and the discipline, I mean, that's kind of a chicken and a chicken thing, which I'd love to hear, you know, um, yeah, what that, what the thinking on that relationship is, the you know, the chronic absence is a really good early warning indicator of potential discipline, or is discipline, you know, causing maybe the result of some, I mean, it's great to restore the practices from the students. I mean, that's much more positive look at it, and that may be part of, you know, what needs to go on in all the buildings. Anyway, that relationship I'm really curious about as well.
And that could be part of, I know in future upcoming slides, I'll address how a way to be monitoring on ongoing basis, and that would highly roll to our process for establishing.
I'm reading the data, right? So this is specifically suspensions and expulsions.
Yes.
Great. So sixty-seven percent of the students, if I added that up there, right? There's sixty percent of our student body that, that makes up, but it's about two-thirds of our students here, and yet they, they represent three-quarters of all. And yet they, they represent three quarters of all suspensions and expulsions. Oh yes, so that is what I'm reading, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so then my question would be the data to bring is why that is an existing disparity? That is, I mean, that's, and how, you know, are we as a, as a team addressing it? Because that number is pretty big.
Yes.
Especially if we're, now we're, we're, we're just at two groups here, right? Plus the six percent there, the multivariate, we can't really figure out how to define that, it sounds like a question. Right, so we're just, so I guess, to present a way of asking for what we want as a board. And we need to sit and have a talk about this more than just this minute.
Yeah.
Because just looking at the numbers, it's.
Yeah.
Pretty big.
Right, um, yep. Uh, couple things, nothing along the same, so bear with me. Do we benchmark, not that we want to do the same, I would never say excuse, oh, all the other schools, this is the same hours. But do we even know if it's extremely north of other schools or way below other schools or exactly down car? Is what other schools are experiencing?
We don't have that data now, it would be an interesting comparison. Some people looking at similar demographics, aren't they just observe very similar demographics, we can still look into that.
Right, so and, and we're afraid of moving through schools, your sites.
Yeah.
And they go, because I don't want to confuse you in Seattle, so, um, and you are, you check.
Oh, yeah, publishes the entity of all of the exclusions and suspensions. And so that data is available to, uh, everyone.
And then the second is the benchmark, um, against schools, anything are succeeding, I wouldn't want to have to watch. I have a rule of imagination, why? Who do you admire, I think has higher than tip? Because we're all going through very similar experiences, I would think. Nuanced seems like a long. So we have those standard schools that are really, you know, doing well. And if they're doing well, what is that standard? What's, where's that percentage at? Obviously, ideal will be zero.
Yeah, the idea is zero. Um, at the secondary level, not my experience.
Yes, so.
Not my experience, um, there's always cases, there's, there's things we have to, when we talk about safety. There are just things you have to do, right? And I will say we've had several cases this year in the middle school, in the high school in particular. That have required us to take disciplinary action and even long term suspensions and pensions. So, um, I also want to address the fact that, um, I think this is not a testimony to how well our schools are doing. Uh, we've looked at data, right? And so some of the data that we're noticing, just to share, um, uh, this is pretty prevalent in elementary and secondary. Were students for the first time here. My, at that minute, they're really high, uh, numbers when we look at the total number of suspensions. Um, the students that were getting repeated experiences are new, new to the district. Um, for various reasons, it's not all our, as I'm saying, it's not the, uh, the side of the seniors either. Anyone who's been new to the district, so that was a trend. We noticed that the high school, that medical even elementary, they're all nodding their heads. And so, um, so I don't want that to say that our teachers themselves, the longer they stay. They're doing a really good job, right? We have to figure out, that really, not that we have the conversation around is, how do we support our newer students that are coming in? And really support them into the culture of what we want for our students here. So that goes, the Villarreal theme, a lot of other questions as well from all of us.
After their forceback, that happened with the school, I can play, I've spent one or two times talking to. Um.
Principals.
My principals, because, and it usually is, they gotta get in there because they're not fitting in or whatever's going on. Sorry, I did anything wrong, it's, it's, I was along that.
Yeah.
In a minute, so I guess, those are, you started with those trends.
Trends, yeah.
Two questions I have are simple, um, the easiest one, but I don't need to answer your glass. What is, what are, then I am sitting for myself to try to figure out, um, what, you know, what do we put? A line and Sam say, we think we have enough data in there before, don't answer that yet. Uh, and then are we even, any continuing improvement processes? Do, do fishbone diagrams, walk through criteria to say, these, we, we understand our root causes. And you're answering the question, what barriers do we have to what our ideals?
That's part of the, the continuous improvement process, this phone from the fact is continuing improvement process. They state that we're not being, because the spectacle of COVID, right? Lot of trauma, a lot of social emotional, um, but we're asking all our schools to take a goal or on that. And use that continuous improvement process with their leadership teams, um, so that we can have all of us focused on that. Whether or not, I mean, we have some schools that have their own suspension rate, but we're all committed to really understanding what is happening. And why certain groups are disproportionately being disciplined. I mean, the equity leads are super invested in that and being part of the planning around that. Our, um, our student justice department is also very interested in working on that, especially in marketing visibility. And so we're, that's part of the work we're going to do around, we're making a strategic goal from now and, uh, moving forward. So, yeah, but it is very easy.
I know it's continuous, but are we, that'll get you some final account. Mine and Sam say, we think we've got a perturbation about understanding, and people are going to do later, really good restorative approach. I design revenue.
Well, that's part, so I don't want to just arbitrarily, the school teams, the leadership teams are going to have to engage and develop their strategies. We can support that with the work, and that Ms. Ma is working on a discipline plan. Um, and she's also working, uh, with the state on creating some, uh, C P I S plan, which is a comprehensive plan to support. Uh, disproportionality for all of our schools. So we're working with our partners, the state, we're going to work with school teams to develop their plan. And then they're going to develop goals for this year, which actually being part of the master.
So, so on, you know, what I'm coming is, uh, I think we have people in the act of succeeding, we're not there yet. It's not done, done and technology top, but it feels like on the white pack. Uh, this, we want to, have you said our expectations are kind of temporal?
Yeah.
This is five years away, this, uh, year away, so we know what's going to happen.
The goal, even tracking goals, and we're going to have our goals, there should be monitored yearly from a district wide level. And also, the school teams need to be monitoring, monitoring them, that's part of their. So they're going to make incremental goals, they're not going to say we're going to get to zero. You know, but they have to make goals around their discipline and looking at, um, reducing that number. Based on the strategies that they're using and that part of the, that is, it's a yearly process. Um, but the goal is to reduce and to minimize the suspensions and expulsions. Our goal is to be a restorative practice.
Yeah, I don't.
That's our goal.
Yeah, if I could just add a little bit too, um, I think it's important to think about when we're looking at disproportionality, particularly in discipline data. That this is, this is a structural problem, right? Uh, this is a, a problem that has also been, um, you know, existed throughout time, right? Particularly when we think about, um, uh, a- anti-black sentiment in relation to discipline, right? And so, um, this is a lot of work that requires really, um, sh- shifting a lot of practice. And also kind of changing some hearts and minds, um, and allowing folks the opportunity to really understand their own biases. That come into play when we're talking about discipline. And so while there are certainly some strategies that are being, um, implemented as, uh, within buildings right now. It also is a long term trajectory that's right in line with the anti-racist work that we're doing. Um, the trainings that we're doing, the ways that we're just increasing that infrastructure, um, and the systemic approach changes that we're trying to make. So it is going to be over time. I mean, ultimately, uh, the goal would be, right? That no young person based on any one identity is more disproportionately impacted or disciplined. Or, you know, than, than any other person, um, but it's going to take us a long time to get there. And so it's continuing to, um, implement the.
We lost.
Director Marie Proz.
Oh, oh, we, we're pretty, I guess, we're talking about root causes, I think. For me, um, felt was bad. We, we were present for a while.
Yeah, sorry, internet's being a little bit choppy, I'm not even sure where I, what, what you did, you all get my point. I'm just rambling, I went on at this point.
Yeah, I think my, if I can, um, Director Reddy can add that and Director Fuller too. Part of the, as you know, the substance you referred to, I think, through this improvement process, part of that means we're never done, right? So we wanted to, as Dr. Pedrosa mentioned, we want to see improvement, incremental improvement all the way through. That's why we're implementing more frequent and a supportive collateral to locate that. Rather than maybe twice a year, it's going to be, my, so, 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 the slides here will show more frequency of that. And it will just be, at each time, you, whatever element of, uh, process for, um, huge improvement. We mentioned visual other, to get at the root cause and then to address that. So it's going to be part of that whole, like, hard to be, um, continuous process. We're looking at this data, what do you do for a quick twist or a quick win? Um, and then see if it worked, how do you know, and when you keep doing that? So that's going to be our process moving forward. And the other thing I want to say, um, root causes, and we talk about, um, suspensions, that's, that's way. Some time, and so I like to kind of focus maybe a little bit more back on native referrals. Because as soon as you, you know, take a student and refer them out, but that's, that immediately gets them the rating. That, oh, like, I'm maybe on a show weight or something, I mean, you put a negative in that. So to re, to kind of focus on, you know, immediate, early time stuff and reduce that. Then hopefully, I mean, we, we always do have an issue of perspective, or, or, I'm, I'm talking about the new students, which have. A whole different, potentially different dynamics, but certainly, I think going back to the, to root causes, we can.
Yeah.
Kind of focus on that, and then you can, and reduce that.
Again, when I mentioned those, it wasn't, those are students, so we still have other referrals.
Yeah.
I'd say those are the frequent flyers, I guess, the ones that we get repeated referrals. Um, we still have referrals that are happening outside of that group, which are, are long terms to full student. And so that is something, and that's what, we, I, they're, um, in my, my, uh, they're all our team, right? So we all have to address that. It does make me wonder and think about, okay, how, if we have new students coming in, how do we support them differently? So it's, it's all of these things, how do we work with the social workers to do maybe more, um, support? Like, it's just a lot of things that we have to think about doing differently. That was data that was new to some of us, like, oh, that's okay, this is new learning. And how do we take a different approach, especially with our newest students that come into our system? But we still have referral issues across the board, right? And, and they still exist with all students. I just want to make sure to clarify that.
I think that some of the questions, um, will be, uh, responded to in the future of the coming sites also. The, the other thing, you referenced a lot of questions, uh, that the building, C building has a comprehensive discipline plan. I mean, I'd have to see some of them, so we can feel for what, what is involved in current, with current practice. We could plug those to our tool box. Okay, on this slide, that, what the next, um, racial equity toolkit question, how will we involve stakeholders? In addressing our disproportion, this, like, we know the disproportion, there may be similarities across in schools, there may be some differences. So it won't really be, um, unique to each school, uh, but ways we're looking at that, um, through our principals. And through our racial equity leads and teams, that can be key, because elements in the schools with the kids, they'd be able to get more direct. Um, feedback from, like, Equity and I, but they do use some of the kids in front. Building leadership teams and our superintendent student advisory committee will be a very powerful source of.
They want to, they want to work on that.
Yeah, they're, so that would be. Very powerful, and our school base, so those are ways we'll go about that. Um, barriers, there's probably a number of them, but the key ones we listed here, um, there's lack of consistency response to behaviors. It's just different per school and part of it systematically that we haven't maybe established, uh, a clear climate consistency. And I'll address that also. And sufficient system wide understanding of racial equity practices. Another thing that we are, it's a multi-year, uh, uh, century of our work. Okay, now, mitigate the impacts and addressing barriers next steps. So this slide shows basically summer through, early fall, our large steps will be. One of the things we mentioned a little earlier was we're finding, and our principals were very good at calling that out this morning. We are seeing, um, a different, that there are different definitions, that some of the terms are used for, um, this, for, for Larsen. You call that out in our last meeting. So one of the things we're going to do is, was with a group, and identifying specifically, what do each of the terms mean? And then providing training to folks to do the data entry, so they feel confident that when they refer, enter some data, that it's aligned district wide. Um, and it was also an issue to, to technology is that we're seeing some, like I mentioned, some of the data entered to Skyward. It's supposed to automatically load into Swiss. Now, it doesn't always, I don't know how people are seeing that at their school site. So that's assimilated a little bit beyond, beyond partners, part of their work to do with us next year is to tighten that up. And make the data, um, pull through consistently. In summer, early fall, that will be part of the training, we're going to see about its application of the terms. If we know, like, anything, this won't be like a one time shot, here's your list of definitions, and now it's fixed, it's going to be ongoing. So, um, and then also principals and racial equity teams at the building leads for racial equity. Will be able to provide training to the school staffs about situations change in you, then the definitions. And establish it as school procedures to, um, track the data as we all agree, uh, the, um, agreed upon definitions and parameters. And then October, will, will we have first chance to run the first reports, uh, first monthly reports to see what are we seeing for referrals and discipline so far? And the next slide, this shows ongoing, um, work we'll be doing. So there'll be, um, monthly, to be active with officer, and some data could be used. So this will really make up two visits, um, per, well, two visits per, um, month with schools. One is specifically to instruction, the other one here is specifically to be able to look at, um, discipline data. And then do that, um, root cause analysis, and talk about what are we noticing, what are they noticing with their recent company teams, have stacked discussions. And what can be, we can adjust it for the, for the next month. So that way we'll keep up on it more, because people don't wait as long for support to, uh, address that. And it was like, you know, we made it a thirty day plan each time, it won't be a huge form and elaborate, but it's the plan for, again, a quick, quick, um. Get some quick wind out of that. Uh, then quarterly, uh, myself, a principal that equity lead data reviews, will look at disparities that are, that have emerged then. And what results have we seen for the thirty day plans schools have been implementing? And how to revise schoolwide efforts, their school plan to be addressed, are they working or not, what needs to be adjusted? And how might that even, um, impact the resips? You know, the school, the plans are meant to be a living document, so they might find maybe worse, they want to look some adjustments based on new data. And then, um, as Dr. Pedrosa mentioned, ongoing support from the comprehensive early intervening services, where Director Ma is leading. As part of a multi kids tier system to support overall umbrella of hope district wide. And with their fellow partners, looking at the social, cultural learning and discipline support. And as Pedro also mentioned, all school's tips this year, or coming into this year, will include goal and measurable around the limited disproportionality. And that might go different per school, depending on what other disproportionality. So happy that I would respond, any questions? So there, I mean, you kind of referred, I'm really interested in how, um, you, this gets the street data. How do you get student family voice into this whole situation? I think CJ talked about, um, you know, potentially, uh, home visits, and I mean, there's a whole variety of techniques you could do that. But really, I'll be really, here, what, uh, particularly for, you know, if we can talk to students that are, as you say, frequent flyers. Whatever, what's, you know, what's, what are the patterns, what are they, you know, right, what's going on there? And that would be something you might develop, like, myself, working with each principal, how will they do that within the school? Well, school talk is a group, so it can share good practices and effective ideas, but it might be subtly, uh, personalized per school. But with the system they have, and how will they get that on the street, input?
Sure, Dan Principal, have any comment on that, family engagement, student voice?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're doing at Foster, um, and we have a, we have it coming out on the twenty second of this month. Yeah, so one of the things that we're doing at Foster, um, and we have a, we have it coming out on the twenty-second of this month. We're doing a family listening session, um, that will also include, um, student voice for that reason. Um, because as we look at our, our data and our numbers, we want to hear from families and schools and scholars on what are their experiences at Foster? What have they been? What are some of the things that, um, or practices and strategies that supports that they feel like we should continue? Um, and really looking to gather that information as we move work into next year. Um, this will be our first one for, um, this year, but I think, uh, still, it's a, a great opportunity to end the year, going into next year, to figure out where we can force correct. And then our goal for next year, our plan is to, um, at least offer those early, um, as well as, um, out of those groups, form, um, some advisor committees who can help inform, and, and that will, uh, consist of scholars and families to help, uh, uh, inform some of the decisions that, you know, we make within the school.
And are the, uh, we are, obviously, going to be involved?
Yes.
Because that's going to be the key to getting inclusive of them. Okay, great.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Fornick is currently, um, working on the consolidated school improvement plan for the chief of thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, I assembled a comprehensive needs assessment committee, and I've got parent voice on that. So during our next session, we'll be having conversations that are centered around, um, aspects of discipline and how they're addressing that are moving.
Other questions from the board?
School years, thank you for being here. Of course, I have a treat for you on that, Doris. Yeah, thank you. They've been doing so much, so much. I understand. Thank you for being here. They were here all night. And then they're back at three, but like, it's been a long day. Yeah.
All right, so as we're moving on, then we are going to go on to our department updating on technology looks like. So I'm going to be needing to read through this.
I suppose the Jem should be here, but he has emergencies, I'm putting those computers there. I'm Xiaoyu Po, I'm the IT director. So, so, so here the question I got, uh, sat to so soon is. Okay, so the question is, uh, for response line for help there, I have run through, run it before. Most, uh, out there takes, so in one day, that's our goal. Uh, we have a few ticket that are assigned specifically to Darren, he's the, uh, guy teacher person. And so these ticket usually is because they want to know how to use something, or they have, uh, some specific, specific question that needs further investigation. So those were assigned to them. He usually, perhaps, was teacher. So those response I will be absolutely talk to the teachers, so they'll respond to it. Concerned tickets, it takes several days, but most of our ticket, and I run them before in the lab for the. This was in one day, so we respond, you know, the first response is within one day, so if there's something, so it is, you know, we are, you know, aware of the ticket.
So, I, the, monitoring, I know, I was, I know we've kind of monitored that in the past, but so we're, there, there's going to be some, obviously, production in support staff in this, in this area. And I, I just want to get a kind of a, a baseline, um, sense of the response time that's happening now, so that if, if, you know, taking away some of the staff and increases our response time significantly, we'll be aware of that.
Yeah.
And then, and then we can deal with, with that at the time. That's, that's really, I know in the past, um, I think I've produced some, coming out of the help desk, or I think there's some reports that you can look at. I just want to make sure that we're kind of monitoring that, so it doesn't get, you know, too bad before we start addressing it potentially.
So I did, um, because of the stepping cut, I did talk to my remaining staff, and we're all aware of this challenge. So we, we know we all need to step up. We even train our, you know, uh, used to be the copy center person. She's not very good at repairing Chromebooks, those things. We have also tried to try to up her skill, so she can help with some other basic, uh, taking. So we are aware of this, and we can't guarantee what will happen, right, uh, the school start. But I think we'll be a little busy, but yeah, we'll try to get it, get us ticketings, and we saw as soon as we can.
Yeah, I just hope that you can kind of raise the flag if it's getting out, because then, then you can, can deal with it at that time. So because I know, I mean, technology and technology, I think we're not going to work really well for, uh, uh, known years under your leadership and, and, but when things go wrong, that can have significant impacts on instructional bathrooms. So I just want to make sure we're just monitoring that, so that's great. I can, I can just kind of give you the, you don't necessarily need to read the answers here. The next one I'm concerned about, particularly that, and I know I've seen reports on the, on the primarily internet capacity. So I want to make sure that we're, I mean, you're talking about some various E-rate projects and so forth, that, that we aren't letting our, you know, response times go down. And I think, you know, at, at the peak capacity, which is usually in the middle of the day sometimes, how close are we getting to our, you know, our, uh, this isn't, my question really wasn't about the phone system. It was about the internet capacity. And are we getting, you know, when we get close to that? That's another thing that can disrupt classrooms, because if the response time goes down, so I'm, I'm curious. I know you produce those kinds of reports, because I've seen them, right? Are we getting anywhere near the point where, I mean, if you get up there toward eighty or ninety percent of capacity, then potentially things slow down?
Yes. So, our, uh, internet access, cash capacity is provided by K twenty.
Uh-huh.
K twenty gave us a five gig, five gig data throughput. We, we never passed two.
Okay.
So, in the past, we only got two gig, we could hit almost one gig, that's fifty percent. So they up ours capacity to five, but we never passed two.
Okay.
So that's shooting pretty good. And our, uh, network wireless has been updated in the, in the last year.
Okay.
And these are much faster, so I'll need to monitor more and see if we hit, you know, even higher. I don't think we'll hit close to five.
Okay.
If we're close to five, then I will ask them to increase, um, the much bigger district there, ten gig. So we're small and we got five, so that's pretty good.
Okay.
So I think we're.
Okay, I just want to make sure a little, and the other questions were related to, um, some of the E-rate, um, projects. I know, so, um, sure, maybe some board members that aren't aware of this. We get, the support part, our telecommunication infrastructure is a lot paid for by a federal program called E-rate, which, um, is a significant, I mean, they pay for, uh, they pay for a different percentage depending on what our pre-introduced lunch rate is, although since we're now in community accountability program, we aren't really measuring our pre-introduced lunch anymore, I think, which is a thing that I took concern about. So right now, we're sitting at, we're getting the maximum amount of discount that you can get out of the E-rate system, which is great. And I just want to, do we have a sense, I know the state is kind of looking at how they might, um, start reporting that number differently, uh, going forward, since we don't, we aren't collecting pre-introduced lunch, um, uh, forms anymore, which is, yeah, it's kind of overlapping between food services and technology, it's kind of a lot. But I just want to make sure that we're not going to get, uh, shortchanged, because a couple of years ago, I think we sunk down one level below the maximum, because our, I think our pre-introduced seem to be reported lower than it should have been, and that can end up costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars additionally.
Yeah.
So I, right now, I see we're at the, at the top rate. Do, do we have a sense, or are we going to stay up there for the foreseeable future? Or do we know?
For, for now, you know, I go to, I just go to, uh, USAT website, they're still there, they never change. So I can keep an eye on that, or I can ask our consultancy what kind of change it might be. But for now, I don't see at least in the next year it will change, but we are not, next year, we don't have money left to do.
Right.
So we will need to look at, uh, the year after, so twenty twenty-five, see if we, if the rate will change. And we will need to connect with, uh, uh, USAT or, uh, E-rate consultant to see if you can find out what may be the next, uh, discount.
Okay.
I'd like to watch speed up a little bit, she, she was. So, um, there's a statewide committee that meets account, accounting, the rules, however, on the state. Uh, E-rate has been, I think, a lot of change.
Yeah.
The staff, this is a federal program, we have reported on our CFA, kind of. Uh, and they were talking about on this committee about ways to ensure, because it's CP school, uh, what things they were going to do different. Um, now, I'm not on the committee anymore, so I'm not involved in those conversations, but I know that it was a topic of conversation to figure out what they were wanting to do, those are the guidelines, uh, the program. And CP has created some havoc, um, in many different areas, not just E-rate. Um, we, we're creating some issues for school districts. So, um, that is a topic of conversation. And I assume that they will be providing more guidance, uh, here in the future, um, especially the.
I'm just going to carry on fast, state things that we're going to get the short end of the stick. It's a, we aren't, aren't careful there, so I want to make sure that we're, because are, are we doing a, I believe the state, OSPI, provides some kind of survey tool that we send out to families to report, report incomes? Is that, and are we getting a high return rate on that, or no?
Um, I'm new, so I can't speak.
Yeah.
Um, I'm completely, completely, but I know that there was one person from last year that was really following about trying to get the surveys turned in.
Okay.
Uh, as well as the, those who are eligible for pre-introduced lunch forms.
Yeah.
So that was a big part of the work that happened in September, October, it was a new reset, um, rate. It is a problem we save by, though, because we can't provide incentives, we can't do some of the things that would, you know, probably encourage some of that participation. Um, so getting examples to use, to respond to those surveys has been really difficult. Um, and I'm assuming that was the same in Takuwa, uh, as it was for Seattle and some of the other districts.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about, because, um, I know the state is trying to develop kind of a new, uh, set of data to collect. So, notice if you're part of a federal program, I mean, they're looking for some links to other data systems, that will pull in some of that, but I don't think it's going to pull in all of it. Particularly in our situation, where we have the highly mobile, you know, new students coming in that, that may not get recorded, and they may not even have the, you know, commitment to their language skills to fill out a form, no matter how simple it might be. And so I just, I just get concerned about that kind of stuff, because that can lower our rate, and then we get less that money, we get less E-rate money and all that. So I just, yeah, hopefully we can keep an eye on that. And, I mean, right now, it's under a really good shape, and probably for another year, and then hopefully we'll see how that goes. Because you've got a couple of fairly significant projects on the radar, like twenty-five and twenty-six, which we want to make sure that we get the, the ninety percent funding. Yeah, so, okay. The other question I had was, uh, yeah, the cascade, so you kind of separate that out, since the concept is it's going to be rebuilt. We don't know when. Um, are they anywhere near, and there may be the same answers to that. Are, are they anywhere near their capacity? I just don't want, I don't want them to be, you know, the school that's kind of, kind of a slower, uh, response time.
I, I think they should be, because they're, like, the building, they are all separate.
Separate buildings, yeah.
Yeah, building has one, like, go to the main, main server room. So it's not like other school, like, like, uh, dorm, like, they have a bar, and they have, so the whole school goes to that, that across.
Right.
But Cascade, you get there all separate. So they have basically like a five B on, on, in the school that run all the data. So they are okay for now.
Okay.
So I, I don't think they will hit any ceiling anytime soon. But it's a good idea to have a single mode, so we can run very, very fast.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Right. Okay, I just want to keep an eye on, make sure that they don't get disadvantaged, because sometimes they kind of short end of the two states here. Okay.
And you'll see on the, so, as, they did, uh, Jen Bakers not hearing them, but, um, and I'll let you review the, the presentations. But also, he has, um, he also wanted to be an additional pieces around potential elementary school as well. That came up earlier in board meetings. So some of the things they've done, that, I just wanted to highlight that. Um, Foster High School, right, specific initiatives for Foster High School to pack. So there are school-specific, um, um, focus items, um, beyond the, the devices, for the beginning part as well, devices. And then there's school-specific things that have come up over the period, and we'll talk about it at court meetings. And so he just given this presentation, additional points around that. So, um, more, they got their attendance, you know, signal, I, they can be better to that than I can, but, uh, I just wanted to highlight that, um, on the presentation, that there are school-specific, um, improvements that have happened this year as well. And we're still continuing to, um, look at as soon as it come up. And then I also want to make sure that the board, that the work there, can you go to the slide, uh, ten?
Sure.
Which says that due to the current fiscal, I guess, I'm presenting, but the fiscal crisis, the stabilization, how do we commit to the same level of service to students, is another question. So I, I'm not, I just want to make sure that you see, um, the budgeting tax questions, budgeting on technology, um, mitigation plan that they talk about. Um, I don't know if, if you want to talk about this at all, but some of the things that you're thinking of, um, the, um, the goals for them moving forward in twenty-four, twenty-five planning there, and what they're thinking about in terms of next steps. And if we want to, then get back to do this presentation, or Sean, you can do it.
I can talk a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, so, uh, we, we already have the four-year plan that we would, we get each year. Um, because the funding, you know, situation, so what I'm doing, we are doing is, instead of doing, do a big purchase, like Chromebook replacement of school, I have been doing every time, just buy hundred, uh, just small amount of that many times over the year, when I needed, I buy small amount, so we don't have this big spending at one time, trying to split that out. The same thing was like the classroom auto system, we had that on the, uh, level, so we are going to replace them all. But we don't need to do that, but they are not, you know, broke, and all, everyone is, is the same time. So I'm doing the same thing, I bought like thirty cents, fifty cents, put it in, in a, in our warehouse, when there, when there's issue, we replace them. So we still spend the money, but we just don't spend big money. Basically, yes. And we also have some, uh, add addition to, like, in the past, we add a separate network, uh, access point for the rent, the rent, the, uh, they rent the space, but sometimes when they use guest, but I, wifi, they need to go some place we are not allowed. So we, we have a separate, uh, access point in the path that connects to, we call. That connect to me call, we call it isolated, it's on a separate network. Uh, not, not, not connect to, to our data, it's outside, or all of them, you know. H access, they connect to that network, they can go to internet, but does not come to our data network. So we set those access point on that, so they can get out and with very little, a little restriction. But they sometimes they want to view some video in the, in, when they rent the area, that, you know, rent, rent the path. They want to watch some video that we are talking for student, but with that, so now they can do that, so the, the, the renter will be. Yeah, are really more willing to come back, so, so we can render the space and then the renter will be able to access all these. Uh, network access and without uh interference or, it, it knows. Not any security issue, because they are actually separate.
Do you have any uh ideas, this, the, the, our, you have that, um, the city capital and. The front books and all that, um, are you, are you supporting any of that, or is that?
I mean, the rules, not, depends on how you support, they have a uh. Antenna at Cascade View.
Yeah.
We actually uh get them the compass network, you know, like an internet connection. Just for that, we do not want them to connect to our, so we have a compass to spell them. But then after that, that's their setup, so they have their own vendor to set up the antenna and how this work. Uh, last time we checked, it didn't, we worked very well, I don't know, uh, I think you have to connect with the city. So they need to send somebody else who check by the antenna, signal doesn't work well. Um, then we have uh quite a few front books still in our office. Um, I think a lot of students actually, when you ask them to pick up, they say they already have it, so they are trying to find another's. You know, s- about a suitable student will accept those program, but those are. In, in, in the series hands, because they, they want to, they say this is kind of like trial, trial run. They want to see if this uh, this funding they can get will improve the student. Uh, their grade, so they are very specific to, they want them, them to be like the, you know, in a high school. And have been with the district for many years, they're moving around, so they are deciding who will get it for, so it's. But we do have those in our, in our, quite a bit in our storage area, but. Uh, student, they don't come and pick up, they should really have.
How many, how many of our students have them at this point?
I, I don't really have the number, because Jen was working with the city, so I don't really have the number on this thing. Um, I can get that from Jen, he knows better.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know, you know, what the trend is, I mean, I forget what the number was when they started too, but there was room for a lot of growth and. Interested to know whether it is growing or it's not growing, or.
Yeah.
And then, and then we must, yeah, us, so, does that program has a, has a objective? To uh monitor those students over what, a year or two years?
They, they say three years.
Three years, okay.
They want to, you know, make sure they can.
Yeah.
See that growth and then they can more fun, get more funding to spread this network.
Yeah.
In the intercourse.
Yeah, I'd love to see their, their annual report, as to what they're.
Yes, Mr. Bush, for how they've got, so he's the, he's the liaison right for the district.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 Mr. Bush, I can talk to, him as well, so. If we, so I know they, I'll look at the hazel map too.
There are a couple of questions, are you still going?
No, no.
Okay, just to, just summarize. The video packs to the fees in your department, um, and we, we got the tech with them. Um, so the problem is manpower cycling into the normal life, the, the life cycle you have in your computers match with. We do what it works, what we did it following. So don't have a manpower to do that, or you have this big piece, um, principal. Take a little bit of design, unless you have a manpower to turn over those computers, but not all of us.
Yeah, basically, now our teachers' device, classroom device, and student device, they are all in. I would say good shape, they are not that old, so we don't need a big change, but. If you're talking about cycle, we may do a big uh change, like possibly student device, we need to change. In a year maybe two, but I have been doing the smaller change, so you don't have to do that big change, so. So that even now the, the spending, so we don't have big. The budget card, you're using the budget.
Okay, that's a good plan, and so the, the second thing is, you got us people, and people are called help desk. And although you might respond everything a little bit, right now, we are committing that whole, we'll see, I think we should be able to do that, and. For the first two weeks of schools start, maybe not, but they will be present, yeah, but I think we can.
I don't know, the first, you know, school start rush, I think we should be okay, we'll be busy, but yeah, I think we can kind of.
They could be able to do it, okay, so that's a pretty healthy thank you for us. To pull the line with literally doing that what we can from last, and that's obviously, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, that was the technology presentation, we can move on to the athletics update. Yeah, who's going to be?
It's good.
Good, cheers.
It's online.
Online.
Thank you, Sean.
How's it going, everyone? Well, here's my athletics update for the year, uh, point three, point four. Um. Not sure.
Absolutely.
It's, it's right on the board of us. Yeah, on board of us, it's not.
Can you see it?
Uh, yeah, I can see the, the first part, uh, yeah, you can move on to the next part, yeah, so, perfect, thank you. Um, so yeah, this was our second year for our intermural program down at the elementary school. Um, we have four seasons down there, uh, we partnered again with the Sequoia Community Center, um, which they were, they did an awesome job. Um, helping us out with facility usage and um just making a great experience for the, the elementary kids. Um, so yeah, we had season one, uh, soccer, season two basketball, uh, season three. That was black football and volleyball, and then uh, we're currently in season, for track and field right now. And then these are just some highlights um of the year so far, so this is season one. Um, soccer, and we kind of have the stats of how many kids we have participating, we usually try to have fifteen and fifteen. Uh, so a total of thirty students for each school. Uh, and then these are just some, some pretty cool pictures that we kind of get throughout the year. Uh, of all the kids having a good time, showing some good sportsmanship. And then this is also season two basketball, we have our games down at the community center. Um, kids love it, we have a ton of parents um that get involved, so we're super excited about that. Well, go to the next slide. And then this is season three, we just wrapped up this, um, we had our volleyball, uh, we didn't have too many uh volleyball. Uh, participants last year, but we had a full team for each school this year, so we were super excited about that. Um, we were able to host all the big games at each of the elementary schools, um, so the kids loved it, um. And then we also had our flag football game, which we hosted at each school as well. Yep, and then, so now we're in uh season four for track and field, um. We actually are gonna have our all-city track meet um at the end of this month, um, it'll be on the thirty first. Uh, so Friday, so everyone's welcome to come to that, um, we'll have all three schools come out, it'll be our second year doing this. Um, we have the little podium and a medal to hand out for each one of the kids that uh winning their individual heats and stuff, so it's. Pretty fun to watch, uh, we get a bunch of the high school students to help out with this program. Um, so they'll be out there helping run events, um, I have a lot of the students up there at the high school come ref. Uh, games down at the elementary schools, uh, so it's nice to kind of get the whole community involved, so. Um, yeah, that's, that's our second year of intermural sports. Slide, and then here's just some highlights of um our athletic program um down at the, at Showalter. Um, we actually got something approved this year where we'll be able to. Um, have sixth graders participate in softball this upcoming season, so we're hoping to see some. Um, our numbers increase for, for that, so that's exciting for that program. Um, we also hosted a wrestling championship, we had all the middle schools in our league come here and. At Foster, and it was a pretty big event, um, and then also we're in the talks of possibly having. Uh, championship games for each team sport, which we haven't done that, so. I know the kids will appreciate that, um, a little friendly competition and kind of bragging rights, I know they'll, they'll be super excited about that. Here are some pictures that we've got for our athletic teams, uh, show up through. Perfect, and then, so yeah, we have uh Foster, um, here are some of our highlights. Um, for Foster for our fall season, yeah, uh, my volleyball team was one went away from uh state championship tournament. Um, we had the MVP of the team, we had a ton of uh first teamers um in all sports for fall. Like, so that was exciting. Here's our pitch players, highlighting our student athletes. Winner, um, same thing, our girls had a really good season this year, um, they're all ones, they're also one went away from uh the state tournament. Um, we have two all league, um, we have an MVP on our team of the league, and we have two all-state uh players, so. Um, I know we see uh Tim Parker, he comes back uh pretty often, so it's nice to see him and. We kind of give our amazed a, a nice little pep talk and kind of some history behind. Um, the banners that are two-state championships that we're having um inside the gym, so that was exciting. Um, we're gonna move on to the pictures. And then, yes, this is also our pictures of our highlighted athletes for winnership. And then lastly, we're just starting to wrap up spring, um, our boys soccer team. Um, they won the league this year, and we actually have our uh state playoff game tomorrow at five, um, at six P M. Um, so that'll be exciting, we're the ninth seed, we're playing against five, and then we also have our track and field uh district. Meet at North Mason on Friday, so we should have quite a few track and field um athletes move on state, so. Um, that's another exciting thing, and um both our baseball and softball team are made to the, the Kinko uh tournament, so. Um, and bad men, we always have a ton of uh, uh ladies come out to, to that and participate, so we're excited about that. And move on to the pictures. And this, pictures highlighting our student athletes. Um. Um, a big thing this year, we didn't have a, a lot, I know within the past few years for coaching. Um, we had a couple of positions open right now, um, but like I said, we. It's been pretty consistent this past year, so that's always good for the kids. Um, knowing they're not seeing that kind of faces and, and just getting familiar and comfortable with that, that place. And then overall for the Kinko League, um, there was a few changes. Um, we increased our staff pay from eighteen dollars to twenty dollars an hour. Um, and then game officials that also increased by fifteen percent, which it shouldn't be going up too much. I think there's one more um step for game officials to increase. Um, and then also a new thing that we're doing in our league is, uh, we'll move into a multi-class. From uh tier scheduling system, so in the past, we've always done two A versus two and three A, which is three A. Um, four versus four A, but um to better match and equate all around the league. Um, it'll be multi-class feature, so it's sometimes with against um same period of schools and. And our league is, it's made up of twenty-five schools now, this, um, but in Super Press, so. Um, it'll look, our games will look a little different next year, but I think it'll be great for our kids to, you know, kind of. See, we're really kind of used to playing the same uh kind of neighborhood schools, and I feel it'll be kind of exciting to see. Um, going out there, so I'm excited about that, and then, but.
Yeah, just get a little bit more.
Yeah, exactly, so yeah, they'll be, will be on our list for, um, some games that are not very good, that stuff like that, so it'll be kind of exciting to play. And some new competition, uh, I think that kids will agree. And then, um, next slide. Um, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, um, I'm working on, just with. I, I haven't got too much information on what athletics, um, is gonna be impacted budget-wise. Uh, but I've been kind of trying to do it a lot behind the scenes, um, I've been working with the two, two cool community center on, um. Working on grants in order, because I really want, uh, I'm really proud of. The intermural program that we have down at elementary schools, it's honestly one of the best things that I feel, um. Uh, it, it's something that I really love, is seeing the kids run around and, you know, and just. Play the sports that they're just being introduced to, and it's, it just seems it's, it's pure, it's one, there's no politics, they're just. Learning a lot of what, what everyone's kind of been doing, for anyone who's ever played sports before, so. Um, it's kind of exciting to see that first stage, so I'm working with the, the community center on possibly getting a grant that. Would hopefully um support this program moving forward. Um, and then also, we've got um a local AAU basketball team, um, that we started, the Tuxedo Bulldogs. Um, so that's something we've never had here in Sequoia, uh, it's always been kind of a hurdle for our kids here in our community. Um, not having access to, to kind of select programs and AAU programs. Usually you gotta kind of go out to Seattle, go out to five and other places to kind of access those things, so. Um, I'm excited about that, we have a fourth and fifth grade team right now, and uh they're already starting to play in tournaments and stuff, so it's. Kind of nice seeing the intermural program um kind of work where all three schools are coming together. We'll kind of make it our own, but it'll all start soon, and kind of go play against other school districts and stuff, so, um. That's exciting, we also um are working on getting a, a feeder team for the football program, which will have. Uh, tackle youth football program, uh, with like an art colors and, um. So yeah, that, that'll be offered to third to eighth graders, so that's, that's really exciting, we've had other um programs here in Sequoia before that. Like C-Tac Sharks and stuff like that, but they, they were never something. They were never something that we could kind of get behind and. Um, it'll be exciting having our programs kind of support them and come to do fundraisers with them, um. Work their game and do stuff like that and just kind of build in that community um, connection, so. That's, I'm really excited about those two things and now I'm just kind of trying to find ways to. To find other ways to. Kind of highlight those other sports like baseball, soccer, uh, tennis, which. Uh, we're in the beginning stages of that. I'm working with the coaches on possibly finding kind of avenues to. Uh, give our kids more opportunities and ask and, and add those sports more accessible to them here. Um, so. That's, that's our number four, five, uh, kind of goals that we're doing for. And then like I was just kind of uh, mentioning. I haven't got too much information on how athletics is gonna be impacted by the budget, but I've been kind of. Trying to. Kind of do some groundwork to be prepared when those competitions ha- happen. Um, and one of the biggest things and goals that I have is to have a booster club up and running, hopefully next year. Um, booster clubs are super helpful, um, running sporting events and kind of. Helping fundraise for specific teams or A S B. Um, that way that I can kind of um, take the load off of athletics. Uh, supporting anything financially. I know the booster club. Um, would be super helpful from that. Um, and then also uh, ways that I'm planning on to try to cut costs on athletics. Um, is trying to host more non-league games here. Um, at, at our home sites, um, that'll cut costs down on transportation. Um, that'll in, uh, increase gate revenue, uh, increase concession revenue and. You know, worker pay would obviously kind of be something that would increase a little bit, but I think with all the other. Uh, revenues coming in and I think would uh, definitely be beneficial. Um, and something I've been stressing to all the coaches and teams, um, has been the fundraiser. We've got a ton of teams fundraising and just trying to be more self-sufficient, so. I think it's great. It's, it's a way for them to kind of get out in the community and kind of build relationships with, uh, with our community, so. I'm all for that and a lot of the coaches are, are definitely supportive of this, so um, it's something that I'd allow to see.
Okay, first off, I really appreciate all this energy and the work that you're putting into this program, which is probably the most um. Active academic or athletic program that we've had for a number of years and um. And the teams are doing really well, the teams getting to stay in your stage and. So uh, congratulations on all the, um, the good work that you're doing. I do have um, kind of a question related, I didn't quite hear what you were saying about the, the league reorganization, so. So we're in a league now, I think that's uh, the Kinko League two A, it has a variety of different sizes of. Of schools in it. I think, I thought I, did I hear you say W is gonna be in the new league, is that?
Yeah, so our, our Kinko League is made up, uh, it's a multi-classification league, so it's a two A, three A. And four A teams or schools are all in the Kinko League. How it's been done in the past has been two A is just phase two A and three A is just phase three A. And four A is just phase four A, but now we're moving into a multi-classification. Um, tiered scheduling system where. It's basically we're going off of. The past three years of data. Basically, we're, we're ranking each team off of the past three years, you know, going through it's. All twenty five schools are ranked for each sport. And we're coming up with uh, a tiered scheduling system where we could, we'll still play a lot of our two A schools. But some of the, the three A schools that aren't so good, they might get in our schedule and. Four A teams is pretty rare to be down uh, where we are. Um, in some of the sports, but like our boys soccer program, we'll play against um, some. Some three A schools, we're pretty good at soccer. But for the most part, we're, we're still facing Renton High School, we've gotten in very high line, a lot of those schools. Um, but now it's just kind of, it's better. For everyone to kind of just match and equate and hopefully get rid of all the lopsided scores that it kind of led me to for some sports.
Okay, so it sounds like probably the, um, the transportation uh, costs. Will not increase. I know there was a time long time ago when we used to send students way along way. These little schools and so we're not gonna be doing that, right? We'll still be primarily going to Renton High Line of schools around us.
Yep, for the most part, where there's really just, there's like four groups. Pretty much for each sport and we're usually in that third or fourth group, which is still basically. Evergreen, Taiyi and all the schools that we're kind of used to playing. Is, there'll be a sprinkle of some other schools. But it's kind of rare.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, the other question. Oh, yeah, about the. I was, I was interested in the, the, the scoreboard in the gym. Um, in the popper gym, which is when I was there for the, the girls had a. Kind of regional playoff basketball and there was a lot of lights out and uh. I'm, I'm seeing, and this may be a question for the next, next issue, but. Um, what are we uh, thinking about? How to, I mean, there's so many, when I was there, there were so many lights out and one of the scoreboards, it was hard to tell what the scoreboard was saying, which is not good for players and coaches. To figure out, you know, like I look at the other scoreboard to see what the number is. So what was kind of the plan for that?
Um, so right now, uh, me and Liliana, we've been working on getting quotes from uh, the vendor that we use for the scoreboards. We're about like twenty to thirty K short of, of the quotes that are getting sent to us. Um, including like installation fees and stuff like that. Um, so.
Did you say forty or thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, thirty thousand.
Yep, so we're kind of, we're kind of brainstorming other avenues on how to kind of make up that difference. Um, but in the meantime, uh, we've, we've ordered a ton of light bulbs to replace the scoreboards. Um, light bulbs that are out right now, um, just to kind of. Buy us some time, um, but. The scoreboards are really old, they're about thirty plus years old, so it's definitely needs to be addressed soon. Um, but hopefully replacing those light bulbs, it'll buy us some time to kind of find out how we're gonna make like that difference.
Okay, so initially when I asked that question, I was told that there were tools to, to replace light bulbs, now we can replace light bulbs, that's true.
Yeah, so um, when we called the company uh, to try to get us uh, to service, they said, no, we cannot purchase. It's not, it's a nineteen ninety two scoreboard, so no, you're not gonna get parts, you're gonna get. So we work with uh, Gabe and then also we work with our technology department and we were able to find the bulbs. Uh, for that scoreboard, so we are replacing that and actually. Technology department, technology, they're replacing the bulbs for us. So they're gonna do the work instead of having the vendor come in and doing it for us. Uh, but if anything else goes wrong with it, other than the light bulbs, we cannot do parts.
Yeah, I guess the, the question I was looking at is, so. The estimate was like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so. And looking at these scoreboards, I mean, there's a whole variety of different things you can get, the, the hundred and twenty thousand, that sounds like the. The digital video scoreboard?
Well, um, it's a one that is gonna compare with your other high schools and it's something that again has looked into the. Uh, the original quote that we received was for over a hundred thousand dollars and I told them, no, we can't do that. So we went down to the scoreboard for eighty K, eighty thousand, but then um, you have to also add halves and then you have to add installation. The measure does not install that for you. So the last scoreboard that we installed was at Cholato Middle School, it cost us. Thirty thousand just for the installation itself. So we're looking at this almost on the same price for installation, so eighty thousand plus thirty thousand and a hundred and ten. Plus taxes, hundred and twenty, also looking into that.
That's a digital video scoreboard.
Yeah, I believe the second quote for the eighty thousand was, um, it's, it's. It's set up where you could get the digital eventually, but it's, it's not the digital scoreboard, it's. Um, it's kind of set up where you could get it eventually, but it's basically what we have now, just kind of the newer version.
Yeah, I, I, and I was looking out, I mean, the, just the fixed numbers, they're a whole lot cheaper than.
Right, yeah, um. Yes, installation involved, there's a scoreboard, then that size, you have to put the same, almost the same size that you have. The scoreboard of poster is bigger than what we just spent in Cholato. At Cholato, we spent two years ago around fifteen. Fifty K was twenty five thousand or thirty thousand dollars for the scoreboard plus installation. Uh, so most of us, when we're talking about the main gyms, we'll have higher uh, area. On to replace with something same size as what we have and we actually need to replace bulbs for. So the one for the, um, where you have the main one that is located on the south side of the gym and then that. The other one, so there's two scoreboards. We don't have to do the announcers, we just need to come with the other shot. Comment, I guess, uh, but yeah.
Two, two quick questions, what's the life cycle of? A new board and how do you maintain it in the anus?
Yeah, usually they don't allow it, uh, even they require you to just use things upfront, uh, and then. Um, if they do install plans, we usually want to just.
The other thing I was thinking is. You know, the, the scoreboards now are L E D lights.
Alright.
Which have, of course, much, much longer, like stand in our current ones, which. And so there's a variety of grants floating around for L E D lights for this, that and the other thing. I mean, usually they're related to. School buildings or something. I'm wondering if there's a possibility to get a partial. Uh, grant related to energy conservation on this, going to be that putting in an L E D and replacing the old ones.
Okay, I will look into that, um, to grants, to see what we can, let's see what we can find on that. I have not searched on grants. For that, uh, for that specific.
The other thing I was just curious about is, so the, the new auxiliary gym, we have two scoreboards in there. Um, I mean, it's like, why would we put the new ones in that? And the main gym and the old ones in the other gyms, that.
Well, you'll have the same problem, you will have some without lights. Yeah, and usually there's smaller two as well.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Those are smaller.
Okay, well, yeah, maybe not even send a hundred thousand dollars to the board right now, but. Um, if, yeah, working on kind of creating some, some grant money or sponsorship money or things like that. And as, if you can, you know, just to fill in the light bulb, I mean, it looks frankly really tacky for us. When we have a light bulb, that's, that's where it's at bad, so if that can keep us going for a couple of years, then, then a good one, we're kind of figuring out how to get it.
So, um, Gabe was mentioning that his class, that class, A S B class, maybe to a certain raise him. Um, I don't think, I hope that he can collect a lot more than, um, who's paying, I'm not sure. No, no, but Rosa knew of someone that can have a donation, she's, she's also looking into those uh, areas. We have to work through the, see if the donations that we get, in kind of have to go through and then as you all know. The board has to approve any donations. Alright, thank you, Gabe.
I'm sorry, can I, I'm jumping, like, y'all are having such a, 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 yes, intentional dialogue, but I wanted to chime in about something else. So one comment and then one, just kind of something to put in a bug in your ear. Um, first, I just wanna, um. Uh, I know I said it last year, but just wanna say a thank you and congratulations, like on the way that you have just expanded. Sports into elementary schools. Um, you really took to heart what we've been talking about around. Um, you know, access for um, all age, age groups and grades. Um, and really kind of the alignment and the consistency across the district, so really thank you so much for that, um, and. Uh, thank you for your continued advocacy around that as well. I know that, um, the budget, um, has created some challenges, uh, potentially around. Um, keeping those programs alive, um, but I know that you, um, are working on things to, to really make sure that that happens, so thank you so much for your commitment to that. Um, I think the bug I just wanted to put in your ear and I, I may have done it last year as well, um, but I think it's always important to advocate for our students who. Um, are not as represented. Um, and you know, there's a big barrier uh, to uh. Particularly trans and non-binary people in organized sports. Um, and while I know that there's, you know, some things that are outside of our control, if we're a part of a, an entity or a league. Um, that, um, you know, does uh, quantify or whether, um, label folks, um, with the binary. Um, but I guess I'm just wondering. What are ways that we are ensuring that our sports programs are inclusive and that. Folks who maybe identify as non-binary or identify as trans feel, um, that they belong. In those programs that, that even with the name are named boys and girls, uh, uh, sports programs. Um, so just one, uh, I'm curious if you've thought about that much and if not, um, you know, what might there be, um, you know, just hoping that you can kind of think about that a little bit. Going into next year, um, and then, um, share some ideas that maybe you have to ensure again, that there's a sense of not just. Belonging once they're there, but the sense of knowing that they can even show up.
Yeah, so I'll definitely, I'll work on that for next year, um, definitely. Yeah, I mean, the teachers and the coaches that I work with down at the elementary schools, um, we, we've opened it up to everybody and. Yeah, I can, I can work on ways to make it feel more inclusive to everybody. Um, cause honestly, I mean, we've had, we've had girls playing flag football and it's, it's kind of mixed. Everything, I mean, um, but I'll definitely brainstorm some things on how I can. Uh, make sure that it, it does feel like a safe space for everybody that can, uh, make sure that everybody feels.
Yeah, if that's something that you're interested in, uh, having a partner to think around that with, I'd be super down. Um, that's kind of like one of my side things. I've organized a sports league for gender queer folks, um, so, um. I'm super invested in having that conversation, making sure that Tukula is that place for students. Thanks.
So I was gonna say, Gabe, oh, next time that, when your presentation or your presentation comes up, it would be great to see you here, but really hard to hear you. Honestly, through, for me at least, you know, on there and, well, I think a lot of the stuff I missed. There and so maybe next time it will be good to see you in front and then it would just be a lot better. Let's see what it's really hard to hear everything.
Okay, I apologize for that.
And then, yes, my, my only other question is, he had brought up, he doesn't even know the impact of how it's gonna make on the athletic. Do we know when that's gonna be kind of? So I'm thinking just as far as, and I don't know how it goes, cause like I said, Gabe, I couldn't hear everything, but. I'm sure there's budget for transportation, there's budget for hiring coaches, there's, you know. Um, you gotta keep the lights on, you gotta have staff out on these things, and so I'm just. Wondering when is, um, when is that gonna come to light if our athletic director doesn't know yet how to. Proceed for next year. That's kind of my question for everybody, I guess.
So we, I know that we gave some preliminary information, we did some discussions. Um, final, probably, Amy will be helping us with all of the directors. On final numbers, we gave preliminary numbers. Before and now we're working through our budget again, cycle. And so we'll have to have meetings with all of the directors to talk about, um, impacting their budgets, but I know. One of our goals especially is to maintain all the secondary programming in uh, the high schools. All the middle and high school programming, with the best of our abilities. There might be some scaling down, which is one I, I have been working on, working on some of the elementary, elementary. Um, and that's all working on grants. Also, um, he and I are gonna have a meeting in special month to maybe really think through, maybe even do for his unified. Uh, some other ways, still having elementary sports, but moving on to the same level that we had before. To wrap this all down, but our commitment for this year is going to be maybe in the secondary, um, middle and high school. Programming as much as we can this year, so very low. Programming as much as we can this year, so very low, not an impact, but there'll be some special.
So we'll just a little bit out down at elementary, it just seemed like, cause I'm I'm kind of was asking, was talking, looking through the side, there's like eighty kids, right? That signed up for each elementary, and then they kind of went to each of the schools to do that, and so, I mean, it sounds, and then this has been a two-year plan, and so it seemed like what I. Heard Director Hoover just say is that last year that was a big push, now we've done the big push, sounds like we're starting to get kids involved. And then now we're, so I just wanna make sure that we circle back around so that we all understand exactly how much. Money there is, but if we we can keep these things going for these, you know, young people. I know, I I definitely stressed before, I'm a firm believer in academic school sports, and that's just an area that I wanna make sure is. It's taken care of, so if we could, uh. Know that quickly would be great, so we can plan, cause I I saw this through twenty twenty six plan. But if we don't know where it is through this year, I wanna see one of those activities.
I know there will be some offering, it will be to the scale, probably, that what we love or prefer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, another consideration that we have talked about before, and another district doing a lot, and and that is start charging for athletics. Or is known for the charging for athletics just because of the demographics of this district, and we don't wanna exclude anybody from that opportunity, so. I'm assuming that we will continue to have.
Yeah, we're not gonna charge everybody anything.
Just to be.
Yeah, but that's why we really, I know that middle and high school sports, I mean, we are working really hard with, um. We're working our annual boys and girl club, there'll be after-school activities there, there'll be sports there. We're working with, um, City of Tukwala, with our clubs, um, and he's working with City of Tukwala, so we're trying to bring back. Some level of after-school activities, the arts, music, the clubs, the academics. And at the same time, we can't offer everything, so, um, but. We believe that it it was important to maintain our middle and high school programming. And maintain them as much as we can, because what I've learned is the area that's really, um, gets impacted in terms of, and I was a K D principal, elementary principal, a high school principal. It's the minimum, like, if you don't really have activities for them, that is a tough, that's tough, it's really tough, you have to really have. The most supposed to be developmentally, safety-wise, all those things, it's a really precious time, it's a pretty full time, yeah.
Any more questions, anything else, okay, well, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing your place next time. Alright, so we can move on to the department update on food service, please.
Uh, hello, um, I'm Charlevoix, Director of Food Services, Charlevoix's partnership with several school districts around the food service program here. Um, I want to start off some of our programs that we run throughout the year, and we'll do that updates on it, especially soon this year. To the next slide. So one of the first programs that we run here is student choice program, um, or I do it more than the voice of the student choice. A student voice survey kind of thing, um, we follow different ways of doing this, um, I've done a choice, where we've done where students have the opportunity to just feedback on quality choices. Um, I've done QR code options around the district to give them an opportunity to anonymous, um, opinions on how our program is running. Um, the most recent one that I took advantage was, um, Mr. Macho, uh, he has a group of students that meet with him every day during lunch. Uh, so I have my admin system go and sit down with them, since I've really got a portfolio of issues to actually work in that kitchen, um. Based on some of the things that I've heard about the students is that they were not exactly satisfied with some of the, uh, quality of food that we were serving. Uh, mainly from our burger pizza station, so this current year we updated our soda deal by removing it, cause they weren't wanting it as much. And changing it to this new station called Grill, uh, students have an opportunity to. Basically do their burgers to order, so they get their own patty options, they get a vegetable, they choose their own sauces, which will, I think, next year. Um, we then just see a huge increase in participation, but just satisfaction for students, um. Previously, based on the amount of staffing about that district, everything, that'd be pretty wrapped, completely pizzas. Um, so we stopped doing that, and again, um, we've seen about double participation in our pizza, and then about three percent of the students participate in the grill station. Um, I feel that our students at that level, while we try to do QR codes and things like that, they don't necessarily wanna take the time. Um, so I'm finding more. Uh, direct conversation with students is where we get more feedback from them. Uh, I will be looking at doing another student voice type deal coming up within this month, if not beginning of next month, to see how they feel about the change we did make or anything, if they wanna see. Change for next year. Uh, next slide. Um, mood boost is a program that we run at all of our schools at least once a month, um, we have our moodies or our icons that kind of. Represent food items and how they affect your mood, whether that be. Um, making you stronger or attentive and alert, um, we've got signs of our schools with fun facts, so it attracts the effort, student engagement, items that they are eating. Um, we'll actually see like we did one where there was a cap and it was for a happy day, which I don't like, like the elementary school, we did a smiley rise and. Uh, uh, orange smile, so kind of all that, those are unintentional, but, uh. I'm trying to do some new items in these areas that we won't normally do on a daily basis, to do a small step expansion on. Through years like this month, we're doing a summer swap, which students might not necessarily gravitate towards on a daily basis, but here's a box tool, like, uh, let me try something new. And see how many benefits that has for your day off to be. Um, one of the programs for the staffing of our cheers program, that's our recognition, um, things that they do that are of the daily requirements. Um, a lot of it has to do with the way they make their staff and students feel, uh, a lot of staff members are very approachable, fun, and students are like. Interacting with them, but it could be just them taking that extra step to make sure that everything is being successful with them. Um, this year we've had a lot of staffing problems because of outage, um, so they've had to step up and fill in the gaps this year. Fun days, um, I'm sure everyone's aware that they, that each day of the year seems to have some kind of national day attached to it, so. So we try to add that into our menus just to make it a little bit something extra, um, like three times a core pocket, we did a free or pie option. For that, um, we did blueberries and pancakes or National Festival Day, it's just something not, again, that we might not always menu, and it's just very blue. Uh, discover kitchen, uh, this is one of our programs that we do on a monthly basis, um. I'll do them different methods, um, there'll either be me menu-specific items like, uh. So I'll just do one on here, we did breakfast item at the middle school for our American road trip, and it's just kind of like focused on items from around the country that were directly related to like. A natural chicken hot sandwich or Chicago dog, um, or smart snack was, is one of my favorite ones, I did at the elementary school every year. It's just providing like this bite-sized item where I get to speak with elementary kids, and like they get real excited, they come back, they have conversations with me. Uh, what is that we're meaning, and again, mine might be something that they eat on a basis, um, the smart snack, we did a whole lot of items that had like. Uh, pumpkin seeds and chocolate in, which I don't know, uh, but again, it's just. Providing students the opportunity to think more about what they're eating and the effects. But then also, um, depending on the month, it can highlight other regions or cultures or people like that. Excellent. Yes, sorry, uh, so, then again, the financial impacts that the nutritional department can have. Um, there are really three categories, um, staffing costs, in my opinion, student and staff teacher participation, and of course, our contractual agreement. Um, again, this year has been a little bit of a difficult year with the staffing, so it's time to actually ensure staff, um, but doing our best to be fully staffed. Possibly ensure running to, well, only cover those based on their lead, that then bring additional staff members to cover that absence. Um, I'm not sure if our, this year we're sitting at. Hoping we're a little bit under budget, but I'm not sure. Um, student participation, staff participation, um, just making sure that we get that average daily participation whenever possible. Um, again, this can be based on capturing feedback from students, how it is that people want to happen on a daily basis. Um, staff, I'm looking at trying to develop new programs that might incentivize them to participate more with us, cause. All staff are gonna be over five, and that includes everything students have, all solid armor, things like that. Um, I've actually been approaching my own staff members on maybe developing like a certain program, a touch card where they. First Monday, they get a free one, or even like a teacher combined with their staff member at free lunch, they just kind of. So, um. And of course, our contract agreements, we have our district, the goal is always to meet it, not exceed it, um. Sure, how we're doing. I know what our numbers are, which should look good compared to last year, but in terms of this year, uh, what we're doing. Um, here's our average daily participation based on our average count. Um, I feel like this year we've had a pretty steady increase, but that's also probably been during increasing number one this year. Um, for example, at breakfast, you will see a dip or, um, more like the winter comes, because they might not be like coming in morning to get breakfast. And then you'll see, um, again, on, uh, breakfast and lunch in March, we have a little bit of dip because of our students that are fasting. Uh, but overall, if you go to the next slide. Uh, you can see that we've had a pretty steady increase in lunch participation out here. Next. Um, recent goals, um, that goes by my department, um, I try to see my department has. Pretty diverse department where all my stuffs and things matter, I remind them to get any feedback on the information that they not only. Know, but what they hear from our students, um, it's important for us to develop menus based on the diversity representing our school issue. We do the same thing with our students, with all the culture we have, we try to diversify them throughout the year. Um, it's kind of a balance between having what we know they like, but also having things that maybe they haven't tried, because it's not representative of their culture that somebody else's. Um, so we use student feedback whenever we get a ticket about that. One of the new programs in my company is primary development of low speeds, which we, um. We did ones pop up this year, um, about India, I mean, it's our program, our architectural team developing ways to. Highlight different cultures, I think, right now we're focusing on like South Africa. Rock, it's like that, um, but you will see throughout menu that we try to do the best I can. Be different cultural groups, so that way we're not just sticking to what you might see on elementary schools. Um, um, this month, again, fun day was our school lunch hero day, so this is kind of like a fun picture of our business, our staff members are on the shirt, uh, where. We are in the zest shirts, could be like, huh, shirts in the things throughout the districts, um, it's just kind of like a slide to show who the staff are, are serving to.
Okay, curious, the, it looks like you're, yeah, trying to figure out a little bit how to get. Uh, engage your students to get more, but it it could have been a topic for the student advisory, I know, asking them, I mean, you've tried different approaches and, yeah. Kind of do the direct student contact position, always the best way, cause you kind of can. Draw it out, but then students would probably have some ideas about, you know, what's.
They actually have a whole list of topics, so. They have a whole bunch, I didn't know I might delve into. Things, I I haven't checked to see the food service book, uh, it was, uh, but we can, Alex and Dennis, that, what they.
Would you like to know what the topic, topic, that students like, the safety, acting policies, and student and teacher questions, so, I can bring you.
Yeah.
I think I know, I mean, I think that during, if if you bring up the subject and it's in the right atmosphere, well, it's just, uh, they will talk about it.
Yeah, they talk about it, they talk about food all the time, it's like when you're down there, I will say, I agree, your staff is, the staff is amazing, they're really. They are wonderful, they're always supportive, are nice and friendly, and it's really, I mean, I've been a principal a long, long time. It's one of the best, them are the best groups I've ever seen in my life, just wanted to say shout out them, they really are. They was waving me. So great.
This is an adult, uh, council member, I came to visit, um, citizens of Austin. Questions for us, policy, et cetera, and they could help with their. School board questions with their council questions, which always happens, and they would always say, yes, the. Men is in the best of food barrel here, I'm here to present this stuff. And me and the council member, we had a one-to-one to do for lunch, we were all, yeah. You should have done a small one, I.
I think the hardest part is that students want to change, but they don't exactly know what they want, um. Again, like even changing the girl station, um, I didn't stand there, serve like questionnaire of students and try to feedback, and they'd be like, one of the questions, what do you want? Burgers and not so, we'll get burgers and not so, so what do you mean, I don't know, that sounds like. We can get more feedback on what it is they want to specifically see. It's part of it also, lost Thursday, um, which showed you possible sushi. Down there, going to the car, it's just, I need more feedback.
This is for an adult answer, but it belongs to a marketing station that has a pot farm machine, and they know what to do to them, and they put in like, they, uh, maybe six different salts. Who have flavors, and all of a sudden, everybody's eating. It's like a spice, like seven, and then add all kinds of stuff, and the thing is, they got to choose what flavor to drink.
Yeah.
Pot farm was gonna be, and maybe you can. Like you make a bread, but you got so many sauce, yeah.
Yeah, I'm excited for the, I'm looking at, like, a sa- sauce station.
Yeah. Yeah, sauce is a thing, no different names, so. But I will say something that's, uh, Mr. Webster all the time, he's always thinking about. How would you do that, like, I will say constantly, how, or if I talk to him, how do I get more information, how do I, how do I, so he's really thinking of that. And he has to stay within the guidelines of the federal government, um, in terms of how much salt we can put in, right? Uh, so he doesn't stay within the guideline, but he is always thinking, he's brought in chefs, uh, from India and different places as well. And so I just feel like that kind of thing, um, the work has been, I mean, feel like, I like that, I have been a principal for a long, long time. And I'm super impressed with the work that Anthony and and Will has been pretty impressive to me, at least. Then that continues in perfect, somebody's always asking, how can I improve, how can I do more, how can I do more, and I'll say, they embody that.
Yeah, this is a kind of a random question, I'm not sure you have it, I noticed, uh, we have something called a Chartwell's Scholarship Program. And I, we were talking, we was, we was up at the group that was figuring out kind of, uh, award scholarships, and we looked at that, there's a big chunk of money there. But nobody knew how it would be allocated, or how it, did Chartwell's give it to us for some specific purpose, or just however we wanna do it?
Yes, I went back all the way to two thousand sixteen, and so, uh, we showed, uh, to the super. It wasn't sold out, and so, uh, he indicated that it was initially set up to help pay for student cash debt.
Oh, okay.
Students were paying for lunch.
Okay.
But this, but we are now offering.
Yeah.
Um, and so we don't, we don't restrict the laws.
Okay, so so we can't use for the sake of the sushi, of course.
Uh, so we we do leave that, we're able to use those funds, um.
So you might tell, yeah, if you're a good job, uh, that you're gonna get some more money out of the stock, like, students, yeah, okay.
And I got one last question, I'm not even on one, I mean, this is not my, we're policy, so I'm just curious, do you marry some? Do you marry some of the sources of your, some of the farm row and cultural in the area, or used to be programs that can actually. Rock. Uh, home marks.
I have not.
Okay.
Um, it's got a certain.
Yeah. Yeah, it isn't. Not quite good ladies, but you know.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Okay, and next is our Department of Street Maintenance and Operations.
Hello, me again, um, so, um, let me go to each one. Um, usually, um, um, at this time of year, I do the presentations here, which this year mostly to talk about. Uh, I talked about the summer projects that we are included, and then keep a little bit of information. Also, by the time we consist on, so our goal is in the maintenance department. Uh, and gather policies is to try to work in collaboration with all the street members to provide a healthy and comfortable learning environment for our students. Staff members and partners, so that's, that's it's our goal, um, thanks, so our department is. Is com- is combining two different, eh, we have two, actually departments in one. Our operations departments, maintenance departments, and our capital, capital projects for capital ready. So we have two, uh, one, it's, um, building facilities, the second one is construction, the small works. And, um, so we receive funds, eh, directly from, uh, the three different, different. And one, one balances, one is the maintenance and operations, which comes out of the basic education capital funds. There is kind of for bonds and related activities, and our levy, which is also voted and is part of capital funds. Alright, so, um. Uh, our department operation is, we consist in the director, it's me, and we have a capital projects professional. Uh, my, the maintenance operation, which is, uh, personally that focuses mostly on the facilities side. An assistant, I have three maintenance workers that are also in, they are also landscapers, uh, landscapers and. Uh, facility maintenance workers, uh, my custodian staff, I have five custodians, one for each school. One lead custodian, uh, which is located at a high school, and for ten, fourteen days, I give new stories. So this is the history, uh, the next slide is, uh. So, thank you, this is the maintenance and operation budget, um, and I have, um. A little, uh, year per year's budget and expenditure, and the difference between them. Um, you can see on the P one, twenty-two, and the twenty-two, twenty-three years. Those are, we have more expenditures than the budget allocated, and this negative, this negative balance was. Because of the use of S dollars, and no increase of the budget allocation, so that you have that difference in there. And, um, this year, at this moment, as, uh, when I write my reports on May sixth. We have a balance, uh, around a moment of a hundred thirteen thousand through, through two, and this one also we anticipated. To have, um, an expect more expenditure than a budget allocated to, to the cost of the repairs. With the weather, uh, with the weather in January. So. Like I said, the budgets would not in, increase on those areas that the spender had been. Used.
Am I reading this wrong, so I see the budget was two point two in twenty twenty-four, expenditures is two point one. What's the difference, but you're saying that we're going to be, we're going to have a deficit?
We will have a deficit, we are not at the end of the year yet. We still have some expenditures to go from now till August thirty-first. We haven't started, uh, our summer projects yet. So we're expecting to have to have a, a deficit at the end of this year.
So also keep in mind, some of this is going to be, uh. Situation we had in January, you have receipts, some of the insurance receipts. Yes, this is just a budget expenditure, that's not, uh, some of the reimbursement that's there already, and so the. Uh, shortfall, like you saw on twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, the budget was never updated, but we got reimbursed by a few months. So that all is.
But if I go back to nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, if we have a positive balance here, and then we already have a budget allocated of one point seven. That was already there, but did that include having the these? Um, this, the additional funds that was there, where did, where did this money then get allocated to?
So the money, it wasn't, it was part of the budget process, the money was never updated to account for the additional. Costs that we were incurring for as you were refunded. Activities that were taking place in the years. So the, uh, we spent money on it right now. And that budget was not reflected in the budget dollars, but we were reimbursed by Aster Brains. For those, for those costs in those years. So this is just a budget, it doesn't include revenue, uh, for sure.
And this is the last year we'll have Aster Refunded. So are you anticipating cuts or shortfalls, or?
Not in maintenance and operations, the shortfall that we're anticipating was the result of the, uh. Situations that took place in January, right at the pipe breaks. Uh, we have started receiving motion to proceeds. So, uh, again, the budget does not need an increase, so it'll look like new percent, but we have started recovering the funds. Associated with those costs.
Yeah, it just reads really bad. You know what I mean, this, this, yeah. Wouldn't read accurately, but.
Right, so that's my.
And my question is, how, how does that help us in assessing that? If there's no way to, okay, this building has some major damage, it shows up. The damage wasn't projected in the budget.
No.
Uh, so of course, that's not in there. But the repairs, everybody ensures, it has to be asteroid. In this report. Otherwise, it's report that help. It, it's not. Never mind, actually, it's not a fair assessment. To how many expenditures. Are related to the projected budget. So, yeah, I mean, either you, either you don't put that expenditure in there, because no separate date. And you give us a fair assessment of how day-to-day maintenance operation expenditures. Line up against the proposed budget. And then that's another, you know, here's some damages that happen in this. At church, we do that, we'll have our budget and then say the. Such as the, uh, what is it called, the furnace breaks. Or we, that, that has a different report, because. It shows up, if it was insured, or the insurance shows up in this budget, which changes that number. And it's not, I don't say that as a bad reflection on the accounting or the management, I'm saying as the correct. Absent of that in the report. It, it's not, doesn't help, because if, if I'm not here, if I'm reading this. Board, I see your, ask your bullet points bottom. It's just something else. I would rather you have, uh, this is me as an executive, I would rather be happy. The budget, the expenditure, the variance. And then say, January, the business is still running, here's where, this, here's where, where my insurance carrier. Is projected to manage whole. Uh, and I, I answer second, because. Most of the time when we're preparing budget to expenditure, we want to know how the money is managed. So we got even the counter works, at their last meeting, people say they went to some. Take with parks and that. Well, that. That's what that would look like, that would give that ammunition. Because you don't have the data, so that's. I don't know how to reconcile, but I know I'm making a lot. So it just helps you, because after we do a journalist meeting, this will be on the record. And five years, you know, ten years, you know, what do we look at?
Kind of, and just, man, that, because I'm looking at nineteen, when we have surplus, where did the surplus? You know what I mean, like working for staff money is down before going forward. Especially if the budget the next year was less than in twenty twenty-one, we reduced the budget, probably because we have a surplus. And then it was allocated, well, where's the surplus money from the two years prior, where was that supposed to? You know, that's why it's, it's, and so just clarification of how this.
And I heard C F O say, and I think that's what you said, is that it was rolled over. And it's in, it's counted for in the budget for the next year, so we had. Going into twenty twenty, twenty-one, when you had. Uh, positive barriers of one ninety-seven. Is that part of that one eighty, one eighty-nine one?
No.
So that, at least, what happened to?
So you hope you're according to the policy this way.
Be allocated, if you wanted a million eight. We spent a million six. Yeah, almost one thousand various.
That's just, it's, uh.
Yeah, so.
That's all I'm asking is. We were about to, we, 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 we're private business. That two hundred, you can save.
So that is not revenue, but. That's the expense.
Right, I, I think that, so that money, you want to give an answer to that question, and it makes sense, uh. And I appreciate the simplicity of, but. Well, when you start talking about. The, uh, the goal of the budget. Is to be able to articulate. We projected this amount, we spent this amount, this is the difference. How do we show it accurately when we have emergencies, well, there's just gotta be a clear way, you can't. You can't put the emergency expenditure as well there and not include. The rest, so that's on a different balance.
Right.
That's a cost of the budget.
I think I could instead of revenue, it says actual revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but I would, but see, on the budget, you don't have it. The budget report doesn't have it. So that's where it is, if you, in my mind, if you add these. Particularly, specifically, these January venture, winter emergency expenditure. If you add that to the budget report, it throws it all the way off, it no longer becomes what you intended it to be.
So I'm just, I'm just gonna say, are you sliding to a certain format when you do these? Yeah, uh, okay, and then.
Yeah, I see.
I see this all in the formal budgeting, and then you're putting the envelope with the asterisk. What the changes are, and I think what, uh, we're contracted with the owner is. Obviously, the whole, we get it in the middle and the end, right? That doesn't make it.
Or, or, or just, just show it in a way, and all that, to show me the way that. That if I'm looking at, at the report, I have an accurate assessment of what happened.
Oh, I hear you.
And I think that's critical, because how do we then, half of the budgets, we don't go over it all from here. Without actively, you know what I mean, that's all about that, because we're steadily increasing hundreds of dollars a year. And then that would be the next question, and I'm sure you're going to get to it, is this why? You know what I mean, why are we going out so much, and then, you know, what are we doing to? Fix nineteen ninety-two's. You know what I mean, as far as, that's, you know, what, what I've heard most kind of the reasoning of. So I'm sure.
The inside part is that we had insurance for the emergency.
Yeah.
As well, so.
Yeah, and this idea, so one of the answers to the question is, um. You know, do we have the data on, and you say there's no data on rituals, however, the ritual goes with the negotiation process, so we are not reimbursed at a hundred percent. So we're going to incur some unknown amount at this point, that we're going to have to cover in addition to. However much the insurance premiums are go up as a result of that, uh, the incident, so we're going to have. And so we don't really know how much that cost us at this point. Um, maybe we should have, well, yeah.
I can send you this response, give you some numbers on that response. For that, uh, as, as.
Yeah, I think I see the, well, today, the, this incident costs seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in G S P, I've been reimbursed today at thirty-three. But that's, it sounds like there's more, um, but it's not going to be a hundred percent. It won't be a hundred percent, so it is going to cost us, but get it, to me, to the, the question that is important to me about this is. How do we prevent this from happening, I mean, it seems like, I mean, we've had these breakages now for like three years in a row at various places. And it seems like it always happens over a break. And the ceiling at over the break, the symptom is lowering the temperature in the buildings. So my question is, why in the world don't we raise the temperature, I mean, these smokebreaks, we know their colors, I mean, they're very well prepared. So why aren't we jacking the temperature in the buildings up during that time to prevent, you know, breakage and, and the cracks?
And that we actually do, and one of the, the majority of the breakers happens outside. So there's no way for us to raise temperatures when we have it's on the walkways, or it's on the, in the.
Kind of, it's probably outside, then, then it needs to be buried.
Right, it has to be buried, it has to be, but we didn't discuss, uh, the majority of the issues that we're having is at Cascade view elementary. We didn't discuss before about the problems that we're having with the fire systems at Cascade view elementary. Now, that cost, we provided that cost to you, uh, December was over a million dollars. So, um, and, and so, so where we, where we gave that, that money, we didn't have a five for brands, we have not. Done one yet, now, that extraordinary thing that happened in, in January was statewide. So we, and the problems that we had, it wasn't actually external, but it was mostly internal. With, uh, pipes that we had that were closer to the wall, so even though, even though we did raise the temperature in this, in that. In these pools, uh, it did not reach to the areas that were, were located, the two breakers that we had. At Cascade view were located on that second floor attic way, where the temperature would not reach those areas. So I'll have, I will have to do, uh, that report. Uh, on the next for me, and exactly will say, exactly the problems that we're having, the, the problems we're handling with the weather. And, and actually, um, I haven't mentioned it to, to Amy yet, but right now FEMA is asking for, um. FEMA is looking for, uh, applications for the weather events that happened on January. So, um, we are, on May twenty-eighth, I believe, is that application to be entered. So the state itself has sent, uh, a request to be, to recoup all those, because it was such an incredible event. For, for the area.
So what about this building, the, the.
It was, it was in the attic, it was, we have a pipe, a water pipe that goes all the way from our. From our bathroom, the, the water comes, uh. It's, it's above the, not the hallway, but it's, uh, above the kitchen, and it goes north. And then it goes where the desk is, which, and when you look outside, that's where the roof is planted too as well. So it's located in a corner, and then it goes, it goes completely west to where, uh, uh, Mr. Dino. Doctor Dino is located, which is the same location, we have a slanted roof, we have a very small capacity in there. It's in, it's in the attic, and the weather conditions. Even though the, the, uh, paths were insulated, insulated, so, um, will. You, you have pictures in there too as well, in the report that we'll send you, we'll send for that May twenty-eighth, and you can see. Uh, the locations exactly where they were, though, located. Uh, the locations exactly where they were, though, located, so.
Yeah, it just seems to me that, that these things, because. They, they don't happen when people are in, I mean, people are in the buildings, the natural heat from all the people is creating a lot of people in the buildings, and.
Yes.
The fact that it always happens.
Right.
When nobody's in the buildings, leads me to, you know, we have to crank it up to ninety degrees, whatever, it's gonna be cheaper than.
Than doing.
Than paying for this, so.
We didn't have, like I said, we didn't have the, the, on Thursdays when we were aware of that weather pattern that we're having. Uh, we were increased, we increased the, increased the, the temperature in all of those. We did not increase the temperature here.
Hmm.
Because, and never in a million dollars I would think that we will have any problem here, so we were still in an occupied, an occupied mode. An occupied mode, the temperature is around fifty six degrees, so it's not colder than outside. But it's a little cold to save energy. Uh, but, um, so the only location that we not raised temperatures inside the buildings were, were right here on the administration. But it's an occupied mode, so it's all fifty six degrees across the building.
Yeah, and so we just. Do everything possible to avoid.
Yeah.
This, this.
Could be my, because I hear it, and I do understand it. But I also hear Director Larson's question is, what could have been done to avoid? I do remember my first meeting on the board, one of the topics were the concern of what will happen when it gets cold at Cascade View. Over the thirty day.
We've had a problem, right?
But, so, uh. You said the pipes up here were insulated, still worse, uh, or still had a problem, so, one. What can we learn from it? Two, what do we need to do different? One thing we can add to is, where else will we go?
Hmm.
Uh, so, that, that, that would be my question, what, if this type of insulation. Uh, what, how do we, what do we learn? Um, and I, yeah, I, please forgive me if I sound sarcastic, but I'm not saying, how do we avoid this, what do we?
The only thing that, the only thing comes to my mind, unless that we go and go to every privacy where we have every single line of water. Or fire, and we go above the ceiling, so we go into the corners of the building to identify. I mean, there's, there's, that's the only, that would be costly, um. But that's the only way that I can see that we can do it physically, look at it, and, um. And every single corner of our, our buildings were.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I do, I'm not sure aside the, uh, I guess.
I would argue, and for just, not to say I would, that might be the only way we could think of right now, I'm just saying. Uh, let me give you the curve, uh, my first meeting, we talked about a million dollar expense that we're doing.
Cascade View.
Cascade View. We took a heavy cycle, we didn't have, we ended up spending seven hundred anyway. Uh, so, so. So it has to be dealt with, or it will be dealt. Uh, that's, that's all I'm saying, and that's the thing created, we all have to avoid. And then what did it cost us to be outside of the building and all that other stuff, so that's all I'm saying, that we. Or it'll happen again, and we'll hear saying, oh, we hit the dollar down.
And I would say the only thing that also we will need is, we need to bring in specialists to look into all our pipes and our situation. Uh, we are not, are not, or we're not experts with that, we will have to bring engineers to do studies in our buildings and see how we are. We did do have a study, uh, Cascade Elementary for the fire, but that, what is kinda interesting about is that the. It happened with the fire, uh, Cascade View this summer, it happened with that water pipes, which is a little, a little different. So, um, so the only other thing that we can do is just brings, bring engineers into the buildings and check of every, every single, uh. Equipment that we got.
Well, do, do we not have drawings of how? Do we have drawings of, of where they're located? Is it possible to identify areas which we call high priority, of the pipes are closer to the top? I know there's technology that has, uh, we can wrap the pipes with the sensor that's on there, and if it's down and freezing, it heats the pipe up. There's things, there's, I believe there's less cost, less cost of bringing in engineers. Of areas that we could, we could figure this out, that would be extremely less cost, for example, like this area over here, we identified, we knew that. It was close, you knew it was close to the side, or you didn't maybe, but now we do. And so now we can get the tech, all you have to do is, we have to get a, you know, outlet up there, wrap the pipe with the heat. The alarm goes off, it heats the pipe up, when it drops to a temperature, it does its job, raises back up, it turns back off. There's that technology out there that's, you know, hundreds of dollars, that are hundreds of thousands of dollars. I just wanna think more outside the box, than getting another expert, another engineer, and another big company to come here and tell us everything's broken. And we need to fix it all for a few minutes, right? I think you think, looking at how your staff was, you have, you know, I'm not saying that all of them, but. You have fourteen or plus staff that are there, even if we systematically hit areas or something, you know, come up with a plan. That's something that we can do to better. Plan or try to prevent some of this stuff, and you said, yes, it is cost seven hundred thousand dollars, so if, if we, that's seven hundred thousand dollars. That's our marker that we're talking about, could be a preventative or under seven hundred thousand dollar problem.
Probably.
You know? Well, that's, that's what I wanna do, and come with some sort of preventative plan, and if we don't have a preventative plan, then let's go. Because, uh, Dr., you know, Director Larson's talking about that this happens enough, he remembers.
Hmm.
And so if it's constantly happening, then, like, we just gotta, we have to do something different, right? We're doing the same thing, then we're just gonna do it over again, so try to listen to you.
And it's possible on the age of systems, was it again?
Yeah.
Same age.
No, that's the plan, the plan is the one they're built, the plan, if, if, if it's been updated, I know for a fact that the fire's been updated, Cascade or whatever got updated. They're gonna give us all the plans of where it was updated, where it was through, and what fittings are there, the force of fittings, you know, the course. Exactly, so we have all that, we can take that data, and then we should be able to then make a plan of. You know, what the, what this is gonna do, so if this symptom, for example, Cascade was put in or wherever. In nineteen ninety, we know that that system has a rating of failure X, right? Then also, well, there, the data is out, so we can just get that number, look back and work, what fittings are being. Is it the nineties or whatever, they're gonna have all this, and then we can plan. To, but we need your guidance and your professional, you know, opinion on what those are, the years, those are. Plans of what, what areas.
And we have to be intentional.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah, not just a big smack change.
It's like the computers, get the cycle and, 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 and.
Yeah.
I have to say, at this turn, uh, there's a report coming to, right, there's a report, and. Yeah, that's what I, um, for the twenty eight, uh, there'll be a report, on the evidence, we can talk more about that part, yeah. All right, so let's go on the next page, and then, um, then it's, it's the same, uh, levy, maybe amounts, two thousand twenty one, two thousand two. Um, to the progress amount, the, the levy, um, dollars is, um. Don't be, that's part of the front project that, at the levy, uh. We don't, we have a budget, uh, also as well, and, uh, but the expenditures don't go back into the fund balance, it just continues on. Uh, so as you can see, we have that set of projects, uh, in the levy, and, um, um, yeah. So that's what we would work on as well.
Yes.
To, uh, so, so levy is a little bit, levy funding is a little bit different. School districts is plus the state, only that the levy funds sometimes advance the projects, so your lending is, is a component of the factors. And so when you establish a budget, which was four point six one, um, what's not included is the half when we were over next year, this system levy that alone. Uh, and so they'll do, so sometimes advanced projects, um, because of the protocol ensure of completion and things to that. So as long as we have, uh, cash flow, um, you know, levy available, things like that. Um, we will see sometimes where we reduce projects from the base, so you would see a longer term index where sometimes you have capacity in love buildings. Sometimes you don't, uh, so you have a chemical or a template, so this is the slide, you know, that. Almost to kind of show the overall capacity of a levy funded project over the, uh, period of time we have this.
And also, would this would include what the levies allocated for? The amount of which the levy was, it was, you know, legal, of that, and then where that funds is currently. And what we're planning to do with the balance, or if it were over or under, that would be very, very helpful. This, this to me just is our.
Uh, can you repeat the schedule that you said?
So basically, where, so the levy, do you have where?
Yeah, allocated for, and then.
Uh, so, for the levy, and then where we're at currently with the levy, what we currently spent, and then what we have left if we're over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, so next, um, these are some of my, uh, scheduled summer projects, uh, the maintenance department uses, uh, the. Main and maintenance department project, which John from, to do most of the repairs and upgrades on their facilities. Uh, so, the majority will be that, the apartment distracting, the gyms, the gyms, and re-recording. Uh, inspection of all the equipment that we have, uh, the science school, uh, the sewer work that we need to do. Uh, the same thing goes to, uh, for all the other schools, so everything on inspection, everything with repair, parking lots lines. And all is done during the, during the summer time, and, um. Most of them are, are inspection, and then all the small, uh, work that we have to do, uh, for facilities repairs. More repairs and such are done during that period of time.
Is this done by, uh, your staff, or is this outside that's that are doing?
Uh, part, uh, is my staff, uh, and part is, uh, mostly vendors. Uh, my, my three staff members, um, don't have, for example, a license to, to do an inspection on a catch basis. Or, uh, or do inspections in the whole system, so you have a skill, you need skills to do that.
Great, and I'd like to wrap that up, so your professional development with your staff members, can that include them getting trained to do such things for? So we have more of a long term look?
There's a little bit of complication in that, because the contract state is that, uh, it doesn't matter for them to, to get any. Uh, professional development, because it's not gonna give them more dollars for any new skills that they apply. So they do have some squishy skills that they are interested in, and then I try to make sure that they take. But, uh, they are not very much incentive to take a skill.
And then let's, I think, um, and I wanna talk about that going forward, I think that should be something we will change. Because I'd like to see the dollar amount of what we're paying someone to come outside to do it. Versus the people that are working here and have them get training in the skill, and I wanna see where that, where that. Point is, but I think there's value in training, are people here to do those type of things, because they'll, uh, long term want it. You know, with us, and I think we'll get better bang for our buck.
Yeah, I do agree a hundred percent, I, I believe that probably the, the contract, the next year contracts needs to be also upgraded. Or updated to, to say that, um, um, they do have some limited, they, they cannot, for example. I don't have an electrician in place, I would love to have an electrician, uh, in our, um, in our records, or, uh. Or a plumber, uh, a certified, uh, a skilled plumber, a licensed plumber. Uh, the rates that they receive are, uh, of a. Your, a friendship, I would say, the rates that they have at this moment, which is not a gentleman.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, that's, that's what we act, so, yes, something that we need to look forward. So you're right, so a mixed back technician is not gonna come to work for a typical school district for twenty four, twenty six hours an hour, right? So they, they come to work, a plumber comes to work, they're gonna be forty dollars an hour, fifty dollars an hour tops, right? The, the vendors are charging, the vendors are charging us a hundred and fifteen to two hundred dollars per hour, per labor, per person. So they usually bring two people in here to do a job, so we do spend a lot of money on vendors, I would love to have, uh. That skilled person.
Is there any logic to try and get, this will sound weird, someone talking with a lawyer, but they get a former on retainer. To.
We do have contracts.
And then they come in, or we ask.
Yes, we do have contracts with them, uh, where the, the way we negotiate the labor rate. But most of these skilled vendors are union, so the company itself has that. Union increase, increase of, of labor to us, so. So the, the prices, it, it, we, we do some negotiation on the, on the dollar, it's a little lower. We also have purchase agreements with, uh, with, uh, only, uh, other purchaser agreements, so then the label, they were that we utilize. Uh, are rolling.
I have a silly question, yes, you probably already know, but when, uh. I think the principal at Cascade View says, gee, we don't, we have a parking issue, and it's not school store night, and then roll around at store night and. Tuck out, tuck out is more like Cascade View, but what I noticed the most was a massive amount, not only on the school side. But on the bar side of the street, yellow paint along the curb, so you couldn't park there. And I, I think that's city's territory, but once you get blessed in the city, do you paint that yellow?
You want, right, you want us to.
If you're at, if you're at.
Cascade.
You're on this case, if you're at Thorndyke.
Yeah.
And you don't take that first entrance.
Right.
The curb all along the way is yellow, I assume we got permission from the city of Tukula. To, to paint that so that people can't park there long term, and it's a safe across the street.
Right, you're talking about.
Right.
The city of Tukula does, the city of Tukula will know the sidewalk.
So do they paint the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, now, so it's part of it.
That's not, and my, my job is from that sidewalk here, so we do use some yellow. Uh, with yellow here for more parking.
Yeah.
Um, another, another thing that had happened is with the fire departments that have changed all the yellows to reds.
Right, right.
So now we have to, to be moving to that.
So just know that I'm not a part of, then she's the former city councilman. Tuck out, hard to load it, the parking system, like, along the sidewalk in front of our school.
And we need it in force. Because it's right yellow for the big parking.
Thank you, that's.
Yeah, it just needs to be enforced, it's hard to, right?
Yeah. Hey, you spared him all the five questions.
So what is, uh, fire testing P O V valves? Senator Show, for show up here?
Oh, uh, we need to do this in the P O V, and you, it's, uh, the primary, uh, water that comes. For, with the, for the fire hydrants into the building, uh, when we did the construction, um. Uh, for, uh, show up in the school, this is one of the items that we need to test. So there is the line that goes from the P O V in the middle of, um, in the, in the middle of, uh, the runabout, the foster house. Uh, uh, show up in the school, you have fire hydrants, and you have a small P O V valve. That brings in the water into the, into your, for your fires, for your fire systems into the building. That line, there is a need, needs to be tested.
That's, that's a test.
And is that, is that a requirement from the state, I'm assuming for so many years, or we just?
That particular P O V valve is for this particular year, so we can host that, we can host that show other contract, or construction contract. That's this particular one.
And show up, we still got a, do all our buildings have dry fire?
I'm sorry?
Do all our buildings have dry, what's called dry fire?
Dry, dry, uh, uh, dry spring or wet spring system?
Yeah, so, so nobody's there, they're sitting there with air or some kind of gas in there until, until their, um. Fire, the water goes in at that point?
Right, and all our buildings have, uh, have dry systems. I mean, yes, uh, with exception, the administration does not have, nor service center, nor transportation. But the majority of our buildings that, everything that is outside, onings that you have outside, uh, all those pipes and prices. Uh, Thorndyke pass it right in front of the school, Tukula pass it also on the basketball hoop area, uh, in the back of the school. Uh, Cascade has the most, because you have between the buildings, you have to have, you have to have the prices there, when systems are inside the buildings. Should I go to the next slide?
Sure.
So, um, this is our plan for summer of two thousand twenty four, and I've spent our levy dollars, and, um, and most of these are, uh. Part of that deferred plan that we have, um, actually from four years ago. And those were part of the, uh, when we have. And those were part of the, uh, when we had our first lady, so um. So we, one thing is that uh we need actually ask the uh the state for a playground. For a playground grant, so we have received a hundred ninety two K for the Cascade playground. Uh, this is the projects that we're having, how do we select the projects, first of all? Is number one safety, age of equipment and how much is gonna impact our students? So those are the projects that we have selected for that one year and then for uh things that break. And we don't have enough funds on the maintenance, then we uh use that uh lending funds, it's.
So just quickly, just going back to your pl- your playground, so the grant is one ninety two, but is it actually too many that I can build?
Right.
So where's the, where's the, do we have money saved for this or what?
Yes, so if when we receive the hundred ninety two, we pay that ninety two K, it's gonna go into the bank balance and I was actually thinking about. Uh, using uh some of that money, so some of that that money for the following year. And then we can, I I still don't know how much money we're gonna have for the following year to get uh the the product that, so.
Oh, I am still confused, so give me, no, sorry, so we got a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
For for our grant, so it's sitting somewhere, right?
We have not received it yet.
But we're going to.
We will, yes, probably by the next year.
So next year, so so the plan is next year, we're going to build this playground that's projected to be two ninety nine, five sixty two. And if I know anything, next year is gonna be more.
No, this is gonna be this year, summer two thousand twenty four, this project is for this summer.
Okay, but okay, then, okay, I'm still sorry, I'm missing, where are we coming up with the hundred and seven or a hundred and seven thousand dollars difference? Where is that money coming from?
The levy proceeds, so we plan to spend up a levy fund.
See, this is, yeah, this this is a hard rank for me and I don't know if all of us can be able to sit here and 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 talk. Because you guys are going around, you know what I mean, and I can't, I can't connect it here on on the sheet.
So the levy goes in the gaps, the levy is still on the up, so we're grabbing the cannon. Normally we receive in the general fund, but because this is related to the playground, it actually has to be paid for other capital projects, which is my levy fund.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so we'll use those proceeds to for part of this program, so a hundred ninety two thousand. Um, and nevertheless, it paid for out the uh capital projects.
And so then and and uh, how then was the decision made? That, and just using this in particular, I could be any other that you have. How is this then, how did we decide that this is the way we're gonna spend the money? And then and then how did we decide that this, we're getting a good deal for two hundred and ninety nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars? How did we determine that that was the best thing for our book?
Okay, so let's start with that, how, why do we decide we need a playground at Cascade Elementary? Well, uh, number one was in our original uh requests when we applied for the levy dollars back in two thousand. Four fifteen, sixteen, two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
So the money was was on a on a different, I have a complete list of different projects. There are uh there is share and that is, uh, when we choose. What is important to have for the following year is based on the safety.
Mm-hmm.
Of the the equipment, age of equipment and the impact of the classroom. Now, playground may not be an impact of the classroom, but there is a safety factor in there. That moment that we have at um, uh Cascade Elementary was built in nineteen ninety six. And it's completely rusted, it's completely rusted, uh the the bars, it needs are going to be to be replaced. So that's the first part of your question, the second part of your question was.
So what what? How well is, how do, how do we determine that the the three hundred thousand dollar playground, which exceeds our hundred ninety two thousand grants? Is the best buy, I mean, how, what's our process of of where we got that?
Okay, so we have a uh, we have meetings with with vendors that are specialized in playground equipment. We choose K C D A because we have purchasing agreement, K C D A have a couple of vendors. And then we ask them for a plan, right? We have three different playgrounds at Cascade View, at Cascade View Elementary. We meet with a group at Cascade Elementary, we actually ask for parent, for student, principal, E teacher. And especially a teacher to be involved in the decision making. Now, based on that information and the balance that we have in our levy, because we are on the last year of this levy, then we. Kind of had allocated based on the amount of money that we have. Uh, allocated three hundred, three hundred thousand for a new playground. Based and also with that information that we received from the vendors and the communication that we have, that's the cost of that equipment. That will be the cost of the equipment, we actually had caught uh requests from the school, um. To reuse our 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 price on that.
So good question, to the city, when we're working on transportation, we literally have a six year capital project in mind. We have always hit the line, but we say what or why we're gonna do a certain project.
Mm-hmm.
And you see that four years to get easier on the levy, seems to me, you add these in the plan, I put the key in twenty fifteen. You kept it in the plan, you got better estimates, you got closer and closer, your good bit time is showing up. And that you did just sit back this year and go, why don't we just do a, uh, uh, you know. General, uh, General General, it is, you've been coming along for a long time.
Coming along for a long time, since the beginnings of two thousand sixteen, when we we actually had our plan in place. Now, I have a deferred lease of projects uh uh that we we wanted to, we wanted to do. So we have a deferred lease for all advanced system, our own systems that we have in the buildings. And then they're all hit that deferred lease, so which year we we, how much money do we have, of which project is coming to? So that's what it's, we selected, then we look into what's safety more, what is affecting more of the students. And that's where we look and pick that project that we that we want.
Hmm, so and I and I'm digging into this a little bit, um, and I'm just gonna, because this is kind of just. A little um thought of mine, and this is why nothing, you know, you're doing a great job, don't get me wrong by any means, but. When we deal with our um students, you know, our people, there is 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 fluid, right? It's very fluid, the needs come and go, the various, everything else, when I see capital, when I see projects, and different things, you build a wall, the wall is built. It's done, move on to the next, it's more predictable, right? And this is um. Better as a budget, you know, easier to see, so what I'm gonna need going forward is I'm gonna need this. Spelled out better of how the monies are allocated out to there, how we chose where we got here to the this. I I hear, I heard twenty sixteen, so we've been trying to playground since twenty sixteen. I'm, and excuse me for, you know, not knowing it all, that seems like an awful long time, hey, and I know it expensive have gone up. It meant since twenty sixteen to projects now and I just, I gotta see, I wanna see how this dollar falls. You know, how we're doing it, and then if it's twenty sixteen, we're getting a playground, I think we should have, you know, in the big hindsight thinking now, we should we should have thought it a little bit. Got the different stuff, because this, you said C S A, was that the name of them, who came out? Who came out to do the projects with you, to look at over a setting? What was the, you said who contracted through a company?
Oh, we used. Okay, C D A, yes, C D A is a purchasing.
Are that a problem or?
It's a purchasing.
Yeah, there are purchasing.
Purchasing corporate, the political districts.
Part of them, they actually go out and do a bunch of bidding, not with the school districts. And then they have a lot of new vendors that you can choose from, and so. Uh, it helps, it actually lost our down the price uh a little bit because.
Right.
They want to help. Um, and also through school districts, the time and effort to actually go out and fill those costs directly, um. Because if we were to do it ourselves, there's a whole set of processes that we have to documentate that take, it takes time and money. To do all of those uh evaluations, notifications.
No, yeah, I totally get that, I just, I, you just have the other side of the contractor's side, I don't say this at all, but. But once they see a school district and then now we're just go, you know what I mean, it's just like, hey, let's just, that's gonna be, they have this unlimited fund and so. I wanna be really careful, your job is very important, be very careful that we're not getting, taken advantage of, just out of that and that we have to. Um, talk with the different vendors and stuff, and even though we have relationships with some, sometimes that also. Um, becomes cloudy, you know what I mean, it's always nice to look, refresh things, find new people, talk about who's out there. Meet at these, you know, I know they have different things that are going on, yeah, exactly. Your meeting agreed, because there's lots of people putting in their best, go forward, trying to get their product out there, maybe you'll take advantage of some of that stuff. And so I don't wanna get stuck in the kind of that thinking, and I'm sorry to beat this down for anyone who's starting, but. But I'm just saying, you build this wall, it's built, you know what I mean, we know what the budget of the wall is, even in a four year, we can project that. Students is more fluid, this is more concrete, and so I just wanna make sure that we're. Trying to stay real tight with our budget and concrete and then investing in the people here at Temple School District to be able to do, whoever's working there. To take some of this load off of these outside vendors, you know, uh, when we do striking of the parking lots, are we playing a better to do that? I see this is, this is, that's not, we don't need to do that, we, you know, the equipment's not that expensive, you know, there's there's things you can do that I think. We can sit there and we can train people to do it, I agree, people need to make more money, that's fine, hire the skill, let's let's pay them more money to do it. So I think we have to do that income count of where it crosses, you know what I mean, when it's worth it, when it's not worth it, you know, type of deal. And so if we could start looking at that part of it, that would be, I think, better for.
Oh.
The people that work here.
Yeah.
And better for us, Temple School District, and then go on there, just.
Yeah, a a hundred percent agree with you on that, I would love to have a skilled, skilled license, um, staff, staff.
So I'll throw that, that suggestion, so the K C D A, um, the cooperative, they're always looking for uh new board members. And board members are board members of the cooperating school districts, so if you wanna understand that process.
Six meetings a month. Yeah, I know. Okay, I apologize, you have some more.
No, it's very helpful, it's very, very helpful, I appreciate that. I just wanna go for the the community, we are a little past time, um, correct it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wrong, wrong.
Yeah. No, okay, sorry. Yeah, right, you know, only few slides to go, so. So you're going to put the, your your question, uh, with the crisis and financial stabilization, so um. We have to identify areas how efficiency can be improved without compromising services. And uh determining what is our core service that need to be preserved at our costs. And we have to find a find also alternative sources of funding such as plan sponsorship, with that said. Um. With that said, we have been actively looking for grants, uh, my department and uh. Um, so we did a file last year for the New America School Grant, but uh we did, we not, we did not qualify for that, for that grant. Uh, on the second round, we did receive that that healthy, help kids healthy school grants for a hundred ninety ten, ninety two. But we're still working with the maintenance, maintenance of repair grant to work with uh to the fire system at Cascade Elementary. Now, we did apply for the equipment assistance grant that is that we wanted to uh cover the cost of replacing the dishwasher at. Cascade Elementary, uh, uh, unfortunately, we did not get the fund. And right at this moment, we are um working with the Department of Commerce, trying and applying for the decarbonation grant. This decarbonation, decarbonation grant is to install solar panels for the uh for Showalter, Thorndyke. Tacuila and Foster High School, hopefully we can get it, we'll see, and um this will help us with the uh. House bill twelve seventy five, where we need to reuse our E U I for our footprints for the school district. And especially Foster and Showalter are the highest uh numbers that we have for the footprint.
So, Mr. Pomacho, I know some of your students are interested in the solar, are they, are they gonna, that suggestion, they they present it to the board at some point, or they gonna make it this year?
It's like, that's why I'm here today, yeah, yeah, um, I talked to Randy, he said they actually had a couple meetings today. And I said, well, if the board docs, um, our director of maintenance and facilities, the proper operation, is talking about installing solar. Um, so I think getting, you know, I was saying, either the composting program, we're saying right here, both seniors. And I think what they wanna do is get something in motion so students can advocate and support in this program of. Um, having solar panels at Foster, specifically at Foster, but we can do it at Eastern flight. At Highland, they did, uh, Highland High School with the rebuilding, the reconstruction, the environmental hub, the Highline, we're together, we see grants from the state. We see grants from all over the place, and they have a solar rate at Highland. So I think the students are inspired, it's something that they want to have a work for. And there's resources like the Department of Commerce, um, going to go talk to the city, um, the city is now applying, they have applied for that grant. We're eligible, so we should, like, we need to apply for that decarbonization grant.
We didn't already apply for that one, so, or just waiting for the for that?
Which the city, it's happening citywide.
So I guess I just.
Not in that stage.
Well, my my next, my next question is, who is writing our grants for the environment department?
Well, I don't, I don't, one of our grant writers at this moment were with McKinstry. And then we, they are writing our grants at this moment, especially with the energy saving and the Esco programs. Um, they were parting with them, with.
If the partners, we pay them?
No, we don't pay them for any grant, any, we don't pay them for any grant writing right now, we just wait.
And then if we receive the grant, do we pay them?
If we pay them for the grant writing.
If if we receive a grant, so.
No, we don't pay them for free, it's a free service.
Completely.
Yes.
And how many grants have we, have we received that they're, I mean, like.
Right at the moment, we we couldn't go for that, we didn't receive the uh American grant. Because the uh it changed on us. Uh, the the way that they were providing the dollars. At this moment, not.
Okay.
At this moment, not. Um, the other grants that we received was my department applying for.
But McKinstry, which had amazing reputation in their industry, and that were failing initially, I ratified the three. So now, they're paying for themselves, I know they're winning grants, we just have a proportion, that is.
Right, and it's depend on how the how the terms, the terms and the conditions of the grant is. So we had to, we had to uh remove from ourselves from that grant's grants, um. So uh because of the way that they are uh allocating the money, the white things that you can do, which we can't.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we we got, we started a couple, and then we had to depending on what they try and with the grants south is, so.
Yeah, the cost of that analysis, of actually receiving that grant, it would give you the cost of the analysis and the cost for. We would have, we would have received, because it was really good investment of lots.
Hmm.
Uh, and what we couldn't, we couldn't justify, uh, because I think the wish is a lot, I don't know, maybe, but we would have received that.
So that would be sad.
And so the volume that now fits, we have to, you know, finding sources that come to us. Our own free money and the strings attached to those can be so complex that it's not a bit higher energy to even water. So we know all this. There there's times where, like, you know, we can't, so that was that situation, they actually, it looked good and it all suddenly changed the. Fire related to that grant and the things that we had to do to do this. It really tied this thing to specific contractors, to specific ways of doing the business. And the cost of those companies were really, really extremely high, and so it was like, oh, that's. Right, I'm not interested in that, so, um.
I guess I, I just feel like to hear from the the students, I mean, I like to have student voice in a conversation, I mean, that would be great, but then. You know, but then, but then hear what's going on, as as well as hear from them about what areas are.
So there's this question out there for the board, we've been asking a lot of questions, but. That's asking that, so they commit to the same or higher level service. And we probably don't. That was actually probably the answer.
Wrong, yeah, right, yeah, so my response is the bullet points.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are mine.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
It's a question for the, for the, right, because it's a concern.
It is.
Yes, it's a concern, yeah.
And like, asking the department, who are the experts in their areas, and that is.
Yeah. And also be thinking.
And also be thinking, now. Oh, yeah, it's a pre-planning, it's a pre-planning documentation, that document process.
Next, I, one more, I think there's more or two. Uh, so, twenty twenty-five, you're canning, what is the impacts that we have on the mitigation plan impact necessary to for pool? Um. It's a really, really high, uh, we had, uh, complete issues, uh, about it with HR and, uh, Amy. Uh, it's very difficult to get, um, sort of, um, a pool. Um, we're using our own. Uh, transportation people, or food service people, or, and also our own custodial team to do the overtime, so, um. That. Let me say that, the other issue is about, my, the majority of my, um, uh, staff members are two hundred sixty days. So when they are requesting vacation, they have leave, I have to have, uh, uh, so it's harder to, to, uh, to get a staff. Uh, they are not just assigned to be on vacation when there is summer time or the break, they can take vacations at any time, so. Uh, the cost for that is, is high, and, um, because of the very small amount of pool that we have on the substitute lease. Uh, we have to contract, um, custodial, uh, uh, a, uh, a vendor to help us with the cleaning of schools. Uh, we also are looking into a custodial assessment, um, for, um, probably to implement for next year. So what we want to try, what we're trying to do is making sure that. That tasks are the routes that the custodial team are doing as specific, and within, within their ability of, for that, for that particular position. So we're looking into all the, um, all the positions with these contracted Ameri, uh, American. Um, we also have a promise that we have, is that will affect my budget, is the utility, the utility increase. On, on everything, on water, electrical, sewer, waste, um, at least it's a, a six point seven percent. Uh, for the following, for the following year, and, um, even though we try to reuse our. Our usage of electricity, as we try to move to LED lighting for the whole school. The cost is, I mean, we may reuse our usage, but the cost of maintaining or paying the bills is high.
Uh, one district, are we one twenty-five here, or something?
One district, one twenty-five, sewer, and the sewer is one, sewer district. Uh, value, 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 uh, yeah, yeah, um.
There are, um. Lots of school districts, this, this utility differences, there are lots of school districts that are kind, I'll send you a note, but. They're kind of, they're definitely safe, you know, have all these, um, hand stock increases, which is kind of under, there's insurance and everything, so. They're trying to collect data about what that has been, so I'll, I'll send you that note, if you can kind of. Put some of that together for us, that'd be helpful, because they might be, put it up on all the other school districts, and go to legislature and say, you know, sir, we need a lot more money for this.
Well, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, it was already done, yeah.
And, yeah, it was showing this.
Okay. Okay.
Pay, uh, and it was, it was pretty.
Okay, it's already been done, that's fine.
And inflation increase in the budget.
Yeah.
And then, and then our rates are coming in at six point seven percent, as a example.
But our tax rate is up like thirty percent.
Right, right, it's, it's on the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, so those are the things that we're trying to apply for grants, just, yes, to reuse our usage and such. Um, the fire systems too, um. We're looking into foreign possibilities, as, uh, we have, um, we have inspections that we have to do, we have. But all that, those inspections are done by vendors, and, uh, so we're looking into possibilities on reducing the cost, um, the labor. Uh, another problem is with that new merge within, with the fire, fire department, with, with, uh, the, the merger with the fire department, with a pure sound. Fire cost has increases, um, um, which, um, the city of Taquilla man, the city of Taquilla management, the fire, the fire department was actually cheaper for us.
Yeah, so, we took our fire department, two, the fire department is a contract city, do you know that one is gonna go down again, once they become?
No, I actually, I actually received, I received a letter from them, because they wanna, city of Taquilla is lower. On the, for example, the ten bits on the services they provide, by two thousand, by two thousand and twenty-four, they wanna increase, and then they wanna increase. And higher by twenty twenty-five, because to stay, the city of Taquilla was like, to stay along with the other, the other cities, uh. Too bad, I guess, to, to, to you, to you. No, so that's, that's where, so, we, uh, yeah, so that's, that's the problems that we're having, so we're looking for positive impacts. Um, new project requests, that's another issue that we're having, uh, that would affect our, affects our budget in time. Uh, the, uh, the maintenance and operational. Monies that we receive, that budget is actually for repairs, repairs on our buildings, and to maintain our buildings and landscaping. Throughout the city, now, so there is no extra money to do projects itself, that, that come with, uh, so. Um, staff members were coming to me and saying, we want to do this, we want to do this.
Any example, give me an example.
Uh, let's say, for example, uh.
Police, police guarding project.
It's not about the, the garden projects, yeah, so. But not necessarily that, I mean, let's say, uh, I don't wanna touch the garden project. We don't want that, but, let's talk about any, any, any other projects that, for example, um, that caused, like, the CTE pro, product. Okay, so, CTE director comes to me and say, hey, the teacher needs, needs a three sink. A three sinks in the classroom. Well, number one, when we design the building, the building, that particular classroom, one twenty-seven, one thirty-seven. Was built for the kids to go in and then do some cooking and such, it was not, it was not designed to be a culinary. A culinary classroom, so you don't have, you, in that classroom, you don't have the correct food system, you don't have the correct sinks. Uh, for them to do their stuff, so CTE changes to a CTE classroom, right, so we need to provide all. Now, uh, here comes, uh, CTE program, say, let's do this. I don't have the money for that on my budget, so then what we have decided to do is create a form. Or a, a process, you have that, which will let know every single person that is involved with that, know exactly what we're doing. Um, it's not just up to me, oh no, I cannot do that, I cannot, let's wait for that. For, um, teaching and learning to know, maybe applies to, to, to his, uh. Program, or he needs to know what's happening with that program, and then also I need to have, uh, the C, CFO here. Or we're gonna get the money, I need a budget, I need a plan, so we're creating those forms too. In a way, if you want something to do at your school, it needs to be approved by the principal, by the CFO, by teaching and learning, by the superintendent. And then you need to give me a budget, what are we gonna have that, that dollars coming off, because my budget cannot support it. So then, once everything is done, then we can start a project, okay, I know that, uh, Dr. Pedrosa approved it, let's move forward with all that. So that's where the, one of the things that we're trying, trying to move to, uh. So we don't have all these products coming to us, and, um, um, at the same time, and we don't have the money, and then we have to say no. But if we organize a limited, if we put our heads together, we're going to do this.
I'm surprised that wasn't the policy again, I'm not surprised that this is, this is something that's been in places all the time. Uh, but it's good to hear that it is.
Yeah.
Um. I know. We're, we're gonna, last, sorry, I promised, almost last question.
Okay.
Um, what are the costs of our subs for the custodial that come in here, we know what that cost is, and I'm getting at a point, you know, I knew what that, we knew what that.
It's forty-five, it's forty-five dollars per hour.
And how, and how much we spending per year with?
I don't have those numbers, but I can give it to you.
I do, and because I'm wondering, look, again, if this is the dollar amount, can we hire another person? You know what I mean, can we, if we're spending this money anyways, kind of going back to where, where are we looking, you know, I, I just wanna look at that count. Right, these are just the numbers that are, these are hard numbers that we can move up and, we can grab.
Okay, I, I'll have something ready for you, uh, on that, um, because if we. If we have a bigger, bigger pool of subs, then we won't have any problem, right, we're just paying them twenty dollars, what's this, uh? Twenty-five dollars, twenty-five dollars per hour, now, we're using our own, own personnel, we're paying overtime rate. And that comes up to at least forty-five.
Your contracting companies paying a fifteen dollars an hour, or forty-five dollars, I mean, it's just, you know, so let's just. Again, investing in the people that are here, that are, you know, but, yeah. Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then, my, the last slide is my department's resident equity loss, so, uh, equity goals. And, uh, so we're intentionally seeking, and including a student's perspective in developing implemented projects for the school district. We did it with a fake on Cascade, and that, we did it with a fake on Thornlake Elementary. Uh, we are developing workforce of conscious people who bring their unique cognitive skill, my, the. From all over the world. And it's just so interesting to bring their own skills into, into, into the department, and it's very interesting. Uh, we are actively, actively seeking diversity, uh, when hiring, I mean, we are very diverse, uh, but, um. I think that everybody's opinion is very, very important, and what they bring to the table. And, um, we are committing also on ongoing learning and improvement. Um, uh, I am, like Dr. Pedrosa said, I'm very new into this equity race, I'm learning, and I'm trying to. Uh, mean, be from another culture, I'm trying to know what, um. The, our culture is now, it's, 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 it's very slow for me to try to be here, but I'm trying to learn and provide that input to my staff, staff members, so. That's where, that's our goal.
Awesome. Few more questions, thoughts? Okay, I have one more. I said, well, yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody else, so then I can say word for. I just wanna walk away with today, we're gonna have a preventative plan in the future, we're gonna look at the plans of each of the buildings, right? What we have already, and put together a strategic plan that your staff can do, right, not contract, what, what, let me know. What you guys, your capabilities are currently. Then the second thing would be, then looking at, how do we, when you, you're looking over at. My, my man right there, and so that we can figure out contracts of. Looking for future of how do we up the skill level of the people that were already employed, so that we can, we can change. That part of it, and then also, we're gonna find out what we're paying outside vendors currently, and then we can circle back around to see if there's. If we're already spending that money, is there a better way to do it, an investment with people over here?
And I'm looking at HR.
Yeah, I know.
But even for him, that, that's. An increased efficacy, uh, it, it, but, as you said earlier, in a different part, on the same subject.
Yeah.
This is connected bar movement, exactly.
It is, it is based on that.
Against his work, or are you done?
Not yet.
No, definitely.
Right.
So, I mean, I mean, because that's in the junior poll.
Yeah, yeah.
But we need to have, that, I think moving forward, that's, we're gonna be told a call to the carpet. You know, how to best use the limited dollars we have, and so at least this discussion is on record, and we have to. Um. Make, make sense of if we do it or if we don't, why?
And I'll just say, it is the work we're doing right now, in teaching and learning, so, removing the contracts, minimizing the, it's the work we're doing. So, I think that's all we can handle, but it's, but it definitely can be a step for us for next year, looking at all of our. If, we do want to commit to have another contract, because you're right, they are expensive. And, and we pay a lot of money towards them, and we're gonna have a much newer budget. And we're gonna have less work to do some of these things in the future, so. It's a commitment we have, but it's gonna take us some time, for sure, because it's more than just the hiring, recruitment, contracts, you know, parameters. Money to have the money, you know, if there's certain wages to be competitive, all of those things matter, yeah.
But I wanna see the budget, how that plays out, because if I don't have the numbers in front of me, you know what I mean, then it's just all out here, which I don't wanna, yeah, just, I need to pray in here, I think we can do some things.
Okay.
Is there anything else? I promise I won't say anything, then, if not, I. Yeah, can we have a motion to adjourn? Someone, second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, have a favor. Bye.
Bye.